2025 as Gift of Life Breast and Ovarian Cancer Awareness Day. Accepting will be Dr. Gwendolyn Lavelle and Ms. Regina Rogers, as well as anybody else from the Gift of Life, and we certainly appreciate you all being here.
Thanks for being here.
Cindy, Cindy, Mac. Thank you, Mayor and Council members. Thank you so much. Particularly enjoyed the prayer because it is so important that we pray and thank God for our blessings, and you all have been such a blessing to Gift of Life, and we're very, very grateful. Our executive director cannot be here today, Norma Simpson. Her husband is having a medical procedure. She extends her gratitude as well. We have a wonderful group here, and Dr. Lavelle is going to be saying a few words, but I just want to once again express our deep appreciation and tell you how much your support has meant over these years. Twenty-eight years now. It's hard to believe. Over three hundred and twenty-five women whose lives have been extended, in addition to thousands of mammograms that have been provided. In the last two years, twenty-five women have had treatment as a result of Gift of Life and our relationships with the medical community and particularly Baptist hospitals, so we're very, very thankful. We also are very involved in educational outreach, as you all know, and one of the most important parts of what we do is try to convey the urgency of screenings and detecting symptoms. We have a number of women who are breast cancer survivors. One is here today, and Dr. Lavelle will introduce her briefly. But I also have a letter from Allison Lowe, who is going through ovarian cancer now. She wanted to be here today. She's with her husband for a medical appointment, Mark Lowe, so I'm going to read it very briefly. Good afternoon. My name is Allison Lowe. I'm a forty-nine-year-old, proud wife and mother of three children. I'd planned to join you today and regret I'm unable to do so as I'm attending a medical appointment with my husband, Mark. When my children began school a year ago, one in college, one a senior in high school, and one in the eighth grade, I received shocking news. I was diagnosed unexpectedly with ovarian cancer last September, which happens to be ovarian cancer awareness month. Therefore, this began my journey of chemotherapy, major surgery, and other treatments. I'm most thankful for my family, friends, community, and prayer warriors. My heart is full of gratitude for being selected as an angel among us by Gift of Life. And I will let you know that she's one of six, and the others couldn't be here today either, extend their regrets. Michelle Smith, Kelly Fowler, Deborah Drago, Margarine Humphrey, Allison, and Emily Mellon. Gift of Life, as you all know, is an outstanding nonprofit that serves thousands of southeast Texans through its mission of saving lives. It continues daily to make a difference, particularly in the area of educational outreach. It is imperative that we join Gift of Life's endeavors to increase awareness about ovarian cancer and its symptoms, and to call attention and the need for early diagnosis and treatment of this disease. I endorse its efforts to educate women on the signs so that their cancer can be detected early and their life can be saved. Thank you for presenting this proclamation. On behalf of the months of ovarian cancer and breast cancer awareness, I hope to see each of you at the Gift of Life Julie Richardson Proctor 5K ribbon run on Saturday, October 25th. One additional comment, too, actually. Julie Richardson Proctor was a very active member of the Junior League of Beaumont. What I heard today, and what I actually saw on Saturday, was an extraordinary, you heard what they're doing. It is phenomenal, and we congratulate them, and we're so excited to join with them in recognizing someone who meant so much to their efforts and who died at a young age of fifty-two all those years ago. One other comment, and we'll save this for a minute, but Doran Nesby, the last time she was here, she was ninety-three. She's now ninety-four, and she's one of our best and most active volunteers, so. And now, some quick comments from Dr. Gwendolyn Lavelle, who is Gift of Life's medical director, very quick.
Very quickly, thank you so much for your profound support of the Gift of Life and what we do for women in southeast Texas with breast cancer and ovarian cancer. And as Regina pointed out, we do have some wonderful survivors with us today. We have Trina Grace, who's been with us a couple of years, and we also have with us Ms. Cindy Yolensy.
No, not a survivor, but Mac is.
I'm sorry. Yes, I'm getting to that. And so also, this month is Prostate Cancer Awareness Month, and because of that, Mac English is also a survivor of prostate cancer and an avid volunteer for Gift of Life. Thank you so much for everything you do. Other volunteers would be, of course, Ms. Nesby, and also Gigi Sotolongo, and Thelma English, which is Mac's better half, and they do a fantastic job. I'd just like to say that, as Regina alluded to, it's so important to get these screenings because screenings are done when there are no symptoms. When there are no symptoms, that means the disease is early. That means if it's caught early, we can treat it before. We have to do a lot of different things, and the survival is so much better. It's not the same with ovarian cancer, and we don't have a screening for that. A lot of women think that when they have a pap smear, that is screening for ovarian cancer. It is not. And so it's very important that you do get those pap smears because you get a pelvic exam and an opportunity to talk about what symptoms you may be having: bloating, increasing in girth in your abdomen, difficulty with early satiety, meaning you get full very quickly after you're eating, or changes in bowel and urinary habits. All those things are symptoms that women will experience and not know that it's because of ovarian cancer. So it's so very important to be your own best advocate and talk about those symptoms with your physician. Thank you very much.
Now, we have the City of Beaumont Communication Update.
In this week's announcements, this November, Beaumont voters will head to the polls to vote on the upcoming bond election, and we want to make sure everyone is informed. So city leaders and your city council members are traveling to each ward to meet with you directly. These conversations are your chance to ask questions and learn what each proposition is about before you cast your ballot. Our town hall tour will take us first to Ward One on September 22nd at the Lakeside Center, then on the 23rd, we'll be in Ward Two at Rogers Park Community Center. September 24th, we'll travel to Ward Three's John Paul Davis Community Center, and September 24th, we'll meet at Alice Keith Park Community Center. Each of these meetings start at 6:00 PM, and community members are invited to any or all of these town hall meetings, even those that are not in your ward. We'll also have a live virtual meeting, October 16th, for those who don't want to get out. We can answer your questions online, followed by an in-person open house at the Downtown Event Center. This bond is about your voice, your community, and your choice, so we hope you'll turn out to one of these many opportunities to learn more. And as always, you can find more information at beaumonttexas.gov/bond and beaumontbonds.com. A reminder, the City of Beaumont is joining local families and businesses in a community initiative to honor the four young lives lost in the Texas Hill Country floods. Residents are invited to drop off their ribbons that have symbolized our love and support for these families. Collection bins are set up in Rogers Park, but today is the last day, so we ask that you go by, make sure that you drop off your ribbons, and they will be preserved, later transformed into a meaningful memorial guided by the families, supported by the city, and built with the help of our community to create a lasting tribute to these young lives. Young girls in sixth grade and up are invited to join us for our For the Ladies Youth Empowerment Symposium. It will be held this coming Saturday, September 20th, from 8:15 a.m. until noon at the Sterling Pruitt Activity Center. This free event will cover important topics like abuse and abstinence, decision-making, financial literacy, emotional intelligence, and human trafficking, all meant to empower the next generation of strong, confident young women. Also at the Sterling Pruitt, the city is kicking off the Last Down Flag Football League for ages four to eight. Meet at the Activity Center, Saturday, September 27th, from 9:00 to 10:00 a.m. for registration and the draft. The city's 10th Annual Oktoberfest is coming up Saturday, October 4th, at Rogers Park. Bring the kids for Kidtoberfest activities as well, and enjoy delicious local food and dance to live music throughout the night. It all kicks off at 3:00 p.m., and again, admission is free. The Beaumont Fire Department is now accepting applications for Grade One firefighters. Applications are open through September 28th, and the Civil Service Exam will be held on Wednesday, October 1st. If you're ready to serve your community, apply online today at cityofbeaumontjobs.com. And speaking of firefighters, the annual Fire Festival is back. Join Beaumont Fire Rescue on Saturday, October 4th, from 11:00 to 3:00 at the Beaumont Fire Museum of Texas on Walnut Street for a free family fun day. Enjoy tasty food, exciting games, hands-on activities, and live fire demonstrations. It's the perfect way to kick off Fire Prevention Month. And finally, Thirteen Nights of Halloween is back at the Jefferson Theater. The spooky lineup starts Sunday, October 19th, with The Exorcist, and runs through Halloween Night with the ultimate Halloween classic, Halloween. Doors open at 6:00, movies start at 7:00. And that's all for this week's announcements.
Thank you very much. For those of you that are here for the proclamations and the presentation, and if you'd like to leave, now's the time to do so. consider matters related to contemplated or pending litigation in accordance with Section 551.071 of the Government Code, calls number 25DCCV1005, Manley Cordero individually and his next friend of JB, a miner versus the City of Beaumont. Now, we're going to move into public comments, and now's the time for any citizen who wishes to speak. You may make public comments on the consent agenda items or any other agenda items. Citizens wishing to speak on items four through seven will be given the opportunity to speak during the public hearing. Please, the city clerk will call your name when it's your time to speak. When you approach the podium, please say your address, city, and state. You will have three minutes for public comments. The green light will come on when you approach the podium, and the red light will come on when your time is up. Please be reminded that when you're at the podium, members of council cannot respond to your comments or questions unless it's a posted agenda item, and we'll do it at that time, but someone from the city will reach out to you.
Dean Tucker, 2550 Long Avenue, Beaumont, Texas.
Hi, Dean Tucker, 2570, no, 2550 Long Avenue, Beaumont, Texas. Super happy to be here today with you. Have some exciting news. I'm watching TV, local channel, this past Tuesday, and I saw this little screen crawling thing at the bottom of the screen said, "Three biotech stocks under $5 with cancer, obesity, and psychedelic therapies." I was shocked. I said, "Oh, my God, I had no idea about this." So I Googled psychedelic stocks and found an article listing forty-three different psychedelic stocks on the stock market with a combined market cap of over $28 billion. Also, I found hundreds of articles regarding the emerging interest in investing in psychedelic stocks, mainly for the use in helping with mental disorders. Texas Governor Greg Abbott just approved $50 billion, which probably a lot of you know, for the research into IboGan, an ancient psychedelic plant from Africa. The field of psychedelic medicines is quickly exploding right now, people waking up to the astonishing healing, I can testify to this, astonishing healing properties of many of these ancient medicines that have been used safely and effectively for religious purposes for thousands of years. It seems to me that one of the main jobs of our government over the last fifty-five years has been to keep these valuable medicines a secret, and to lie about them, and to threaten those that use these or possess them with incarceration. Does this really make sense to anyone? No, not really. Jesus was clear when He told His disciples to heal the sick among you. I love that quote. I believe that we have a natural right and a natural desire to heal ourselves. Our government has not acted in good faith with us, and I feel they don't deserve to be in charge of these valuable healing medicines. Fortunately, there is a law that protects our religious freedom and protects our natural right to use these sacred medicines. It's called the First Amendment. Everyone should study this law without question. It basically says that Congress shall make no law prohibiting religious freedom. In no way can this be construed to mean that Congress can make any law, no matter how fraudulent, to suppress religious freedom. I say, "Let's claim our natural right to practice the teachings of Jesus Christ, and we should get on with the business of supporting the healing of ourselves and of our great nation." I know this is scary, but sometimes somebody once said, "Fear is fun in disguise. Let's seize this moment." Thanks.
Thank you, sir.
Kenneth Earls, 1265 Condo, Beaumont, Texas.
I'm looking at this proposition. We're going to spend money on a bond. I guess it's $15, basically fourteen to $15 per month. I'm going to ask this question of you. Do you know how much money leaves this city on the first of every month? And is transferred to Baton Rouge under the guise of energy? Why are we spending our money on electricity that you should be building the second utility? First utility is water. The second utility is electricity. Basically, each year, we spend approximately $150 million leave Beaumont from Jefferson County, approximately $400 million leave here. What if Beaumont had its own electric company? Why should we spend our money sending it to Conroe and then transferring it over to Baton Rouge? We need to keep our dollars and cents in this city, and if we're not going to do those things, it's crazy. I look at this bond package, it's $264,167,995. Do you know what that would do for this city? This is every year, $154 million? It's every year that we transfer to Louisiana. And guess what? Just recently, they're coming up with a data center. That data center is going to cost upwards of $4 to $5 billion. That's our money. That money need to stay here, and guess what? We should have those supercomputers. If we build that second utility, we never have to do another bond package. Because guess? You'll be in control, you'll make the mandates, you'll ask us to vote on certain things, and we'll give you out the approval. Don't allow us not to do the right thing. Bond packages are good, but a municipal corporation, not a municipal government? A municipal corporation allows us to spend our money right here in this town and do it efficiently.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor West. Evening, council members. Back in, I think it was February 4th, 2025, I spoke on several items. Head-on collision was one, and I think we just experienced one in Beaumont, Texas just the other day. Not me, but another young lady passed away. Trespassing on property, I've experienced that. Dirty electricity, good God. Man, they're eating me alive. Have you ever been abused? Good gracious, seismograph testing that took place in the city, I found out back in the nineties, early nineties, that damages to houses, streets, infrastructure, and earth core took place in Beaumont, Texas. I spoke with over sixty people in Beaumont that had structural damages in Terry Park area. I didn't even get to Amelia area, but I'm here, Amelia had the same problems. Thank you, and I appreciate if y'all were looking to the mail.
Thank you, sir.
Virgil Brown, 2310 Sunny Perkins, Beaumont, Texas.
My name is Virgil Brown, 2310 Sunny Perkins Street, Beaumont, Texas. On the Sunday was the fifty-third year that the incident happened with William Boy Brown. And by working on the museum, I got eleven museums I'm working on to put his exhibit in. On my way to working on this here, following up on things, I come across Craig Washington, was my daddy's attorney. And statute of limitations are up now, and Craig tells me everything about how the city paid him to lose my daddy case. Now, don't trust me, don't believe me. Call him, and he'll tell you what happened. Call him, he'll tell you. There's no problem now. I advise you to look at the transcript of the case. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Good afternoon. My name is Gerald Hatch. I'm here today because I have issues with different fines that the city of Beaumont put on me. I'm the owner of First Baptist Church here in Beaumont, 900 Broadway, and we have a major problem with homeless people destroying our buildings. But y'all made an alternate that y'all only talking to people that own the building, and we the one being fined because the homeless people coming in, destroying our building. We nail it back up, they come right back and do the same thing again. But the city of Beaumont coming through and fining us for the damage that the homeless people done, thinking that's a solution, talking us. So I'm here to say, "Help us get rid of the problem. Don't target us. I got me coat on the six because somewhere else is destroying my building. I don't think it's fair for us to be the owner of the buildings." Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Mark Faggard, 3715 Long Avenue, Beaumont, Texas.
Excuse me, my back's a little sore today. The reason I came down here today, I understood there was going to be a workshop on the homelessness issue, and what this gentleman just said really highlights the need to sit down in this community and discuss the homelessness issue. And I was thinking we were going to chat about this at the workshop session after the formal meeting, so I'd like to reserve whatever time I have left to visit with y'all then.
Thank you, sir.
Tony Carrier, 4240 Anas Street, Beaumont, Texas.
Good afternoon. You know, my name is Tony. This is Chris. He says he's going to be the mayor one day, so he's my protege. So thank you for allowing me a chance to speak. First, let me publicly thank you, Mayor West, for being the first civic leader for signing my petition at One City Church to get prayer back in school, and he stood in line just like everybody else, so I thank you for that publicly. Secondly, let me express my love for this council, because I love all of you with Agape love. Everybody in this courtroom, I really do love you, you know, because I just do, you know. We're supposed to love each other. But what I'm here today for is because of the political climate in the state that we're in as a country, you know? It's just crazy, it's nuts, and it's evil, you know? Although I am from the north, and I was very young when I seen people being beat up and hit with billy club spray and water hoses put on people just for the rights to vote, you know? And I'm just tired of it, and I'm sick of it, because I am an advocate for people, you know? That's what I do, that's who I am, you know? And I want to be able to be able to speak regardless of our differences, our political differences. It doesn't matter if you believe in this and I believe in that. You know, no one should preach hate, I'm not saying that, but you should have a right to do so, you know? And, you know, I've just been very sad and destroyed by all these killings. It's just crazy, it's nuts, you know? We have to stop, you know? I love you. When I say I love you, I truly do, because it's powerful, it's more powerful than hate, you know? And Beaumont, we want to show them that we're not going to do that here. We're going to make a difference and put it on the map, you know? Regardless if you're red and I'm blue, because I am a liberal, but I love you, and I do believe in prayer. We're not heathens, at least I'm not, you know? I was the one that... I was the one that ran around that petition, and Mayor West can tell you that. You know, he's a witness. So I just wanted to say that today, you know, because I am very, very sad. You know, it breaks my heart regardless of what that young man was preaching. And two lives are lost. The young man that did it and the one that's lost. And let's not forget about the Colorado. Those children, the Catholic school, this is horrendous. And we must stop as people of God. Like, I love what that man said about God, you know. We got to get back to Jesus, the blood, you know. This is horrible, you know. And I'm scared, but guess what? I'm not scared spiritually because I'm a soldier, and I'm in the army of the Lord. I'm not scared, you know. And I'm going to keep on doing what I do for the people. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Barbara Wilson, ten ninety-six Calder Street, Beaumont, Texas.
Good afternoon, Mayor, councils. I was just going to share a little about the homeless. Barbara Wilson, I own the BAW Resale downtown. I've been downtown Beaumont for twelve years. I've been at the current location where I'm at for about a little over seven years. I've been open there. Some of the things I just want to share quickly. Prior to opening my store, I had about three of my windows broken out on two separate occasions from, you know, the homeless. One was under the influence of something and the other upset about something, but they broke the windows out that I had to personally replace. I had a car run into the back of my building. I have a concrete barriers there. Had the barrier not been there, they would have ran into my building. And the concrete pillar is bent currently. I called the police. They told me because I wasn't a witness of it happening. The homeless actually told me who did it. The car sat across the street for about six months in a vacant parking lot with all the the paint that's off of it onto my build, onto my posts. But they said they still couldn't do anything about it because I wasn't a witness of the crash. But had that barrier not been there, they would have been in my building. Just past Fourth of July, I had, I guess fireworks. I guess the homeless had fireworks. Everybody out there is not homeless, but I guess they did fireworks and damaged my sixty-nine thousand dollar roof I had to put on that building. So recently, I had to do, they came out and all the burn holes from all the fireworks that they shot that fell on top of my roof had to be replaced. Also, prior to me opening, someone was shot on the sidewalk across the street from my location. And some other place has that, the side of this building where they sit on the side. Someone was shot that evening. And just so happened, I have a sensor, and my garage door went down. But when I left, I wasn't aware it went back up. But thank God, nobody went in my building because the police was there all night dealing with the scene where the gentleman was shot. I've had a few of the homeless come in there stealing things out of the store. I've had someone's purse taken that I was able to go back and, you know, retrieve from the person. They solicit my customers. This past winter, I had someone that was passed away, found deceased on the back of my day, I think they passed away at the hospital. But we were able to pull the cameras, and you can watch from five AM in the morning until about seven o'clock as this person, you know, passed away from being exposed. I really don't know what they died of, but, you know, for two and a half hours on the camera, we were able to watch that person who was later on that morning, you know, pronounced deceased. My taxes went up, and when I went to petition about the taxes, the mediator there said that, the tax appraiser said that I had prime property. And the mediator that was there had never been over there, so he's never even seen what I was even speaking of. But I was told that I had prime property, you know, on Calder and, you know. And that was one of the topics that we spoke up. Two weeks ago, somebody just got stabbed on the side of my building.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Tyler Nothing Fitz Wharton, twenty-four sixty-seven Calder, Beaumont, Texas.
How's it going? Actually, if there's a workshop, we can save that for that a little later. But my name is Tyler Wharton. I'm a commercial investor in Beaumont and surrounding areas. Regarding the homeless, my neighbor Barbara and Mr. Hatch, I've got four properties right there. I've got sixteen properties on Calder. Got thirty-five in Old Town. A lot of this, four in this affected area next to Barbara and Mr. Hatch and Mr. Austin that's sitting here. And my job is pretty much running off homeless for a living because I get calls from all fifty-five of those tenants on Calder. Every week, I'm dealing with the police. The stabbing we had recently, and another stabbing we had ran in my building bled out like a stuck hog in my building, which cost me about fifteen hundred dollars in environmental cleanup. I had a child therapist in that building. A guy masturbated in front of a child. They quickly moved out. I lose tenants about every month. I fill them very fast because I'm probably the best at this in town. It's a constant fight. It's difficult. And I've got new projects on Calder in the works. I've got new projects downtown in the works. I've closed on five properties in the last six months in Beaumont. Five of those are rented. You know, it's getting awfully attractive to move to other cities, to take my business elsewhere, else place. I'd love to continue doing this in Beaumont because we've got some awesome tenants like Oz Cafe, Struggle Street, Smash Wagon, For the Record Music Venue, that have brought some really awesome stuff to this area that are game-changing little catalysts of change in these little areas. And I love them. I go to them every single time they have events. And I closed on one in Salisbury last week. And all these other areas are getting awfully attractive because I'm tired of fighting, tired of complaining, I'm tired of the email chains we're in. I'm tired of getting calls from my neighbors about these issues. We really need to come up with a plan, whether it be relocating some of these businesses. Because if not, we're going to be relocating, and we can't afford that. Beaumont can't afford that. Calder can't afford that. Downtown, the gateway to downtown can't afford that. So just if we can come up with some ideas, I'm all yours. I'll buy property for a homeless camp. I'll donate whatever, you name it. I'm all yours. We just need somebody smarter than us to help come up with this idea. Thanks.
Thank you.
Addie Allen, ninety-six ninety-five Gross, Beaumont, Texas.
Good afternoon, City Manager, Mayor, councilpeople and administrators. First of all, I'd like to say thank you. I had a water leak. Of course, it was on the city side, and it has been remedied almost. But I appreciate the calls. Thank you, thank you, thank you. Now, just recently, the legislature, did I do that? Just recently, the legislature passed a bill, Senate Bill One. And I talk about sirens, alarms, et cetera, warning signals. Texas has moved forward. Now, I want to know, after two years of talking to council, different members, are we going to move forward? Each one of you in your material when you were running talked about public safety. Public safety does not always include fire and police. There are citizens out here that need to be protected in the event, God, thank you, that we haven't had a tornado or a hurricane. So I hope in this budget that you have allocated something for an alarm system louder than what fire alarms are. When you go to your house, you walk in your house, most of you have alarms to let your family know you're there. You have alarms if there's a fire in your house. Protect us, the city of Beaumont, and let us have some alarm systems. It's easy. You know, if you need some help, ask me. I can help you free of charge. The other thing is, on two, on the regular agenda, at my church, and we were fortunate to be in that Fennett Road renovation for the children. There's still a lip. If you drive into the drive, it's, your car is going to go boom. So I hope that that can be fixed with the contractors that are doing that work. So to each one of you, thank you because I know that you are looking out for your wards. But this will be all of the wards, and we need that alarm, alarm system. I've had trespassing on my property. It's still in the balance. The city has not addressed it. I have done what I thought I needed to do. If somebody jumps over your six-foot fence, that's an infraction. You have a fence over there for the police that carry guns. And if they jump that fence, something's going to happen to them. So I want a conversation with somebody to get this fixed. It's been over a year. Thank you, and thank you for your service.
Thank you, ma'am.
That's all I have, Mayor.
All right. Thank you. And with that, public comments are now closed. Move into the consent agenda. Is there a motion in a second for approval of the consent agenda?
Move to approve, second.
There's a motion in a second for approval of this consent agenda. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of approving the consent agenda, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed? The motion is carried. Mr. City Manager, may we have the reading of item number one?
Thank you, Mayor. Council consider resolution authorizing the city manager to execute final change order number one, accept maintenance, and authorize found payment to Texas Materials Group Incorporated, a CRH company for the street pavement preservation citywide Phase Two project. And it comes with the recommendation of approval of the resolution.
Is there a motion for item number one? There is a motion in a second for approval of item number one. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of approving item number one, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed? The motion is carried. Mr. City Manager, may we have the reading of item number two?
Council consider resolution authorizing the city manager to execute change order number two to the contract with C-Tex Construction Corporation for the Fennet Road Sidewalk Improvement Project. And it comes with the recommendation of approval of the resolution.
Is there a motion for item number two?
Move to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
There is a motion in a second for approval of item number two. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of approving item number two, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed? The motion is carried. Mr. City Manager, may we have the reading of item number three?
Council to consider resolution rescinding resolution number twenty-five dash one-five-six previously awarding a contract to Volta LLC for the wastewater treatment plant power distribution switchgear building pre-purchase project. And to authorize the city manager to award a contract to Black Star Diversified Enterprises LLC of New Orleans, Louisiana, in the amount of two million to a ninety thousand, five hundred and ninety-six dollars. And it comes with the recommendation of approval of the resolution.
Is there a motion for item number three?
Move to approve.
Is there a second? There is a motion in a second for approval of item number three. Is there any discussion? Yes. Councilman Hilliard, if you turn your mic on. Thank you.
Can we get a little clarification why we're doing this?
Sorry, I misspoke. It was for item two, it's number three, so you don't have to worry about that. So we received the bids from, when they were opened, and we were, we recommended award to Volta. And as we were working through the execution of the agreements, and so that's when their surety to come, that they can perform the project and their construction bonds, per the terms of the contract, we were notified that they were not going to be able to fulfill those terms. And so, per the terms of the contract, that is where we had to make the recommendation to withdraw that award and proceed with Black Star Diversified Enterprises. And they have confirmed, Black Star has confirmed that they can meet all of the terms of the agreement as submitted. Welcome.
Any other questions or discussion? All right, all those in favor of approving item number three, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed? The motion is carried. Mr. City Manager, would you please take us into the first public hearing?
Council to consider a public hearing to receive comments on the twenty-twenty-four Consolidated Annual Performance Evaluation Report, which is the caper.
All right, thank you. And at this point, we will open the public hearing.
Good afternoon. I'm Jess Prince, the Community Services Manager here at the city. This is an annual report that we are required to turn in to HUD. And what it's doing is tracking the metrics that are associated with our annual action plan and with our five-year consolidated plan. We have to hold a public hearing to collect comment for thirty days. And this report will then be submitted by staff on September thirtieth. And so what this is doing is capturing all progress related to the goals and outcomes that were outlined in our annual action plan, which was approved by council back in May. This covers the beneficiaries that receive funding from all of our line items in the budget. It covers the resources that are made available each year with both our CDBG and our home grant. It also outlines the geographic distribution of those funds and what census tracts throughout the city are receiving the money and which low-income households. All of the activities that are carried out with these funds have to be linked to a national objective such as a low-income household. And so when we have our plan, each year, we have a list of goals and outcomes. These included for twenty-four, affordable housing, our clearance and demolition activities of blighted structures, housing rehabilitation program, which is our most popular and also most funded program, and then our public facilities and public services line items. So this report has been available on our website for thirty days, and it does a breakdown of all the households that were projected to be served by each of those items, and then compares it to the number that actually were. Overall, we're doing an excellent job of meeting all those goals and objectives. And again, this is a report that's input into HUD's metric system called IDIS. But you can view the report online, and it will stay there even after it is submitted.
Thank you.
I don't have anyone that wants to speak, Mayor.
All right, that public hearing is now closed, and we will, will we move, can we move into the next public hearing, Mr. City Manager?
Yes, Mayor. Council to conduct a joint public hearing on the proposed fiscal year twenty-twenty-six budget and the proposed fiscal year twenty-twenty-six capital program. And if, Mayor, I could?
Yeah, the public hearing is now open.
Okay. We'll get some slides up. While we're getting those slides up, we've gone through some months of budget preparation. We've had a few workshops, I think at least three workshops. We had a budget presentation by myself last, in August on this. And today, we're coming to you for consideration of approving budget, adopting a tax rate, and holding this public hearing on the budget. So we were here for that. Could we go to the next slide? Again, we mentioned these things for sure. You also set the tax rate today. You adopted a proposed tax rate last meeting. This time, you get to set the tax rate on today. Next slide. After the last meeting, there was a lot of feedback from city council, feedback from people on things with the budget. I encouraged that. Matter of fact, I said I wanted to have that feedback from you. So I appreciate those of you that gave me the feedback on that particular document. And we incorporated many of those changes into this budget, found budget for your adoption. And on here, you look at the slide, one of the things that really came out from some of you is you wanted to see a high fund balance. You wanted to see more dollars in reserve. So we did that. You want a consideration for senior citizens. We have senior citizens out there. Proposal from council wants for maybe a tax abatement or water abatement. We were able to address that issue. And then, low residential water rates. The water rate study called for an increase. Some of you didn't want the water rate increase. So we worked our way to where we did more. We provided some water rate increase, so we worked our way to where we did more. We provided some relief for residential properties and puts a bit of an increase on commercial properties. Then there was a question of sustainability. It's like, how can we maintain this budget into the future? You know, we are having quite a few increases. We have increased the personnel, and how are we going to sustain that? And so, we've addressed some things with that. And then, too, you wanted to, you were very sensitive to the fact that the city's looking at a bond election, and you wanted to do some things to not create hardships or put more on our citizenry. What does looking at, asking them to consider a bond election? So, we were looking at that, too. Next slide. And this is some of the budget adjustments we made since that last meeting. There, we looked at some things. We reduced expenditures by three point one million dollars, which increases the fund balance to forty-one million seven hundred and twenty-two thousand eighty-two dollars. We did that through basically two main moves in getting that done. Was to finance some purchases and still paying cash. We had proposed in the original document to pay three million plus in cash for capital items for the city. You chose, you wanted a higher fund balance, so we just say we can finance those things and pay yearly payment for a period of time and keep more cash on hand. You know, either you can finance something, you can pay cash, and the feedback I got, you prefer to have the higher fund balance. So, we did that. The chiller replacement from the main library, that was seven hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars a piece of equipment there. And so, we decided to put that off and not make that purchase this year. So, that gave us the accumulated amount of dollars we were able to increase fund balance with, and also decrease expenditures. One great thing we were able to do is put a freeze proposal, and this proposal is to put a freeze on senior citizens' water rates to where throughout this rate structure, there will not be an increase for senior citizens on their water rates. Whatever it is now, that's what it will remain. And we're very glad to do that. We're very proud to do that. Some of you wanted that in this budget, so we were able to do that, and able to work through that issue. We increased the water fund balance requirement to twenty percent, and the rate study greatly recommended that the city go to a twenty percent fund balance on water rather than fifteen, thought that was a bit low. So, this budget calls for a twenty percent fund balance requirement, and the general fund balance after what we've done now is now twenty-five point seven percent, a twenty-five point seven percent fund balance, and water is now thirty point two percent. So, those numbers are a healthy place. Excellent. Let's get a little bit of information about general fund highlights. There, you see the amount of revenues we bought in and what we're projecting to bring in next year. And the great thing about this slide is that we're able to do all of this and put this budget together without a tax rate increase. The tax rate is proposed to say the same, exactly the same, it is nine point six five nine, six percent, which is three cents below what this council could have set a tax rate. So, you set it at point six five and had the ability to go up, and you didn't. So, we were prudent in doing that. And this is not just this year. This has been a historical trend with the city of Beaumont. This is the fourth, fifth year that the tax rate has remained steady or below the voter approval rate, and property values have grown by more than twenty-five percent since 2022. So, we often hear that, you know, Beaumont's economy is somewhat depressed, but there are many indications that said it's not. You've got a twenty-five percent increase in property values since 2022. And we were still able to get with this budget to be able to fund the expenditures and capital reserves item that's needed, the things that the police department truly needs, like vehicles, motorcycles, other equipment, also fire trucks, recreation equipment, et cetera, IT technology, technology infrastructure. Cost of living adjustment for civilian employees here. We were able to do that at the three percent civilian employee amount, and as for all civilian employees out there. But we also, not only the three percent, we did the third year of the phase, the phase three of the compensation study. So, those dollars were also put into selected job descriptions, and selected employees in those job descriptions to get them at at least a minimum requirement. Our goal was to get everybody to minimum, and then work toward getting everybody to mid, mid pay structures. So, this gets everybody to the minimum pay structure. You know, when I got here, we had people weren't making ten dollars an hour. Then after I got here, we got everybody to fifteen dollars an hour, and now this gets people up to even greater dollars, to around at least twenty dollars an hour, it's like that. So, this has been great. This is great for us. And just pay equity, just pay equity across the different departments, the different people, the structure. Next slide. Water utilities, I mentioned about the no residential water rate increase with the five-eighth inch lines meter, and we had to do it that way because there are just a few residential meters that's larger than five eights, which is abnormal. But we're keeping those monthly bills stable, and we're making, again, things better for our citizens and not putting more dollars on them as the city grows and the infrastructure grows. I mentioned the senior citizens' water rates frozen throughout. We would just, once we identify that, we have listings of senior citizens that own our water system. We got be able to identify those, and we'll be able to freeze those rates, and they won't be able, they won't have to pay more. And again, this water utilities, the fund balance requirement will go from fifteen percent to twenty percent. Excellent. Fund balances, I've got a lot of feedback on fund balances. I just want to talk about that for a while, which is basically reserves. People ask what's fund balance is reserved. This gets a snapshot of your main funds here at the city. You have the general fund with basically operations and maintenance, and then you have enterprise funds of solid waste and water utilities, which is, the gentleman mentioned, you don't have an electric company, but you do have a water company, and you have a solid waste company, which makes money for the city, and we provide those services. So, if the general fund at twenty percent, as I mentioned, that's going to give you a fund balance of forty-one million seven twenty-two, and that's nine million above what's required for that fund for the budget year. Solid waste is four million four, approximately one million nine over required, and water utilities, which is going up to twenty percent at nineteen million, which is six. So, you're going to have a total balance of sixty-five, almost sixty-six million dollars in reserve dollars that that city council can use as you wish. You can actually spend dollars of core funds. Just because money's in a waterfront or solid waste fund, city council has the authority to use those funds anywhere within the city chooses to. So, you have a total of sixty-five million seven ninety-three to have as a reserve. Next slide. Just to give some history through 2025, with the water utilities fund balance, you know, as you see through 2020, it's around eleven million. But we've, in this administration, we put things in place. One is through water rate increases, is to grow that fund balance up to eighteen point two million, and this acts a 2025 number, so it's higher than that now for 2026, what we're proposing. That puts the city in a very, very strong position with this balance. Next slide. And this kind of gives you a graph, a snapshot in 2021, that water utilities fund balance was around fifteen million. You saw it went down to 2023 to about close to eleven plus. I came in in 2023, and our goal was to grow this fund, and you can see how it's grown. My first budget was 2023. So, in 2023, we put things in place to grow this fund. It's now, we're projecting it to be over nineteen million dollars next year. Next slide. Solid waste fund balance, same thing. You can look at the history since 2020. It was pretty flat. We put some things in place. We did some things with rates out at the land field, and you can see now that we're projecting that next year for that to be five million, which is over three million dollar growth in that fund in just a year. We have some things to do with solid waste, but the story is we're growing these balances, and it's not just general fund. We have to be concerned with it. It's solid waste funds and water funds, et cetera. Next slide. And let's give you a little bit of historical data about your fund balances. The chart on the left kind of gives you a ten-year history, around thirty-two million dollars in 2015. And the font on the right just showing the correlation between fund balances and the city receiving dollars from disasters that increase these fund balances. You can see as it started to go up in 2018. In 2017, you received Hurricane Harvey dollars, about twenty-three million dollars, that went into your coffers there. You know, it happened in 2017, but those monies come in the next year. So, it peaked up to that fifty-four million dollars. And then, in 2020, you had COVID, and the city got a forty-one million dollar injection. You know, sometimes there's fortune and misfortune, and that's the case with disasters. A lot of times, it's fortune and misfortune, and you get those dollars. And then, as you can see, in 2023, in 21, you had a small event, the winter storm. You heard, said it was reimbursed a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. You can see what's starting to happen is a correction, where those balances are coming out back down more to what they normally are, although they are higher than before 2015, 2016. Next slide. And again, this is another one that gives a pretty good picture with this graph of your fund balance. You can see in 2003 to 2017, the city only had a ten percent fund balance requirement. So, you could see down at ten percent. But the amount was higher. It was up around thirty percent. And you can see the historical data for the city of Beaumont is that thirty percent range. If you look from 2007 through 2017, it's in that thirty million dollar range all of those ten years. Now, what happened for it despite? That's when you had those disasters, and you got those influx of cash. You got influx of cash from Harvey, COVID, and all of that, and you can see where that graph peaks, it goes up, and your fund balances go up. But what it's starting to do now is going back to that natural correction back in that thirty, forty thousand dollar range, where it's always been ever since 2005, '06 time period. Next slide. Transfers out. Let's talk about transfers out, too, what the cities always have had transfers out. If you look at 2010 to 2025, transfer has out of, increased about eight million seven. You know, that was a time, the only transfer out you had was for transit, which was one million nine, one million nine hundred thousand dollars. But now, you have other things for transfers out. You have transit, you have capital items, you have benefits, liability, insurance, et cetera. It's all coming out of that fund. So, that number does go up, and it does fluctuate. Next slide. And sustainability, economic growth, you know, and people say, how can we maintain, especially when we have contracts with police and fire, that steadily go up? And so, we're going to talk about how the city will be able to sustain well into the future of what we're doing. One, we talked a little bit, you have increases in property tax values, you know, property tax values. It's gone up four billion dollars in ten years in the city of Beaumont, you know. So, while Beaumont has its challenges, don't always listen to people tell you the economy's not doing okay. It's growing, you know. It's increased by fifty-six point nine percent from 2016 to 2025, your property tax values. Next slide. Then, sales tax. Sales taxes increased here, you know. This is again, 2025, but you had a fifteen point three percent increase from 2018 to 2025 in sales tax. Property tax and sales taxes are your two largest sources of revenues as a city. They're running neck and neck in what that is. So, both of those are increasing, and both of those are going strong. It offers sustainability in the future to be able to fund increases, to be able to pay for things, and still maintain a healthy reserve. Next slide. And this is just 2024 sales tax. I had a complete slide of sales tax in this area. Look at all the cities in this area. Beaumont's just about outperformed everybody on sales tax and what it did, you know. Beaumont got fifty-two point, fifty-two million. But percentage-wise, it was three point five percent increase, and that's, Bridge City was seven point three three, but we're talking about only hundred and sixty-four thousand dollars versus one point eight million dollars. So, the economy here has performed as well or better than the other cities in the region. As you look at this data and what you've done with sales tax, which is again, your second largest source of revenue, first of second. Next slide. And then, you know, but in doing all this, you still have to remain prudent. We have to remain prudent in budgeting. We have to make sure we're controlling, we're cutting, we're putting things in place. We have recurring expenses, just because an expense occurs this year because we have a parks plan this year that doesn't come back next year. So, those dollars are recurring, non-recurring, so they come back to be used within the budget for that next year, for the years in the future. So, we look at those things. We have programs that you won't have in the future. Those programs go away. We have our department heads every year prove up their program to see if there's something that's still needed for the city, and if it's not needed, that money goes back into the pot to use for something else. So, we continue to do that. And then, two, you have capacity for sales, I mean, property tax increases. This year, you could have raised property tax three point zero three one percent if you chose to, which would have generated over three million dollars for you. So, there are plenty of sources to, for sustainability for Beaumont to remain strong and prudent with budgeting well into the future. When people say, well, what are we going to do then? You're in good shape with that. Next slide. And another thing, what we've done since I've been here, some people were, but Beaumont used to be fully self-insured. That's no longer the case. In 23, 24, we got here, we got insured with the Texas Municipal League and a government risk pool, which ensures the vast majority of our resources. And when something happens, all we have to do is pay a deductible, like the building we just lost in a fire. Either we can replace it ourselves and just pay a deductible and have it replaced. So, Beaumont's not exposed like it was in the past when you were fully self-insured, and you all, everything you replaced had to come out of your pocket. We submit a claim to TML. They deny, accept that claim when we get paid back for many of those resources now. So, that exposure is just not there as much as it was back then. So, you have the major protection for major losses, major protections for major storms, disasters, et cetera, that if, you know, if insurance doesn't pay, FEMA doesn't pay, our insurance company pays before we even have to think about paying for something out of our pocket now. And there might be one more slide. There are another, a couple of, oh, I want to talk about this. And then, just for confidence sake, and what we do is for accounting and principles. We follow the general accepted accounting principles, GAAP principles, follow with our accounting, with our processes, recommendations, checks, and balances, to make sure that what we do is all above board and according to the general accepted accounting practices. Next slide. City bond rating. You have City bond rating. You have a very good bond rating. This came from Moody's. Not long ago, so again, confidence in what we do. It said in the city's most recent rating report for Moody's for utility debt, they highlighted the city's size will service their anchor by institutional customers and recent actions to improve revenues. Including rate studies and revenue recovery efforts. And one factor listed they they that they said that could lead to a rate downgrade is failure to implement rate increases as anticipated. And because of that, because that was put into our audit, that is one reason we started implementing rating continued rate increases. Because who could the city could be downgraded if we did not do that. Next slide. Again, A one rating, high credit rating, our finance city financial files are obviously capital market. So greatness regarding, excuse me, this G O debt, city's rate is in that double A category, which signifies a very high quality. That instrument, very low credit risk ratings in this category indicate you issues with a very strong capacity to meet their financial obligations. Next slide. And this is the rating we got in our last audit. We got an unmodified audit opinion, which is the highest rating a city can get in an audit. An unmodified audit opinion. That's the best the city can achieve and we've gotten that every year, every year we've been here. So I ought to just say that our our rating agencies give us a great, the city's in a good state financially. Next slide. And in closing, just, you know, we've gone through this process. We've had a lot of discussion. This is basically the summit. I presented the entire financial plan to you. I won't get into that today. But it's been submitted to you, you know, we've amended, adjusted. Based upon your feedback and from the last meeting, what you what you gave. A budget is your best estimate of what's going to happen during the year. There's nothing. And concrete that has happened, but it provides a guideline for us to follow as we go through a through the year and a budget process. And this is our best estimate of what we can do as a city. Will they be perfect? No. You will make amendments, you can make adjustments and you have the ability to do that every meeting you you choose to to do so. But we do submit this budget and we're asking for consideration of adoption of of this budget and tax rate. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager.
Thanks, Brenna. I'll pay you later.
Do we have anybody signed up to talk during the public hearing?
No, sir, I do not.
All right, with that, the public hearing is now closed. Mr. City Manager, would you take us into item number four, please?
Yes, Mayor. Counsel to consider and ordinance adopting a budget for operating the municipal government of the city of Beaumont for the fiscal year beginning in October one, twenty twenty five. And ending September thirtieth, twenty twenty six. Adopting a master fee schedule, appropriating money for the various funds and purposes of such budget, including appropriations. Of money to pay interest and principal sinking fund requirement on all indebtedness. Repelling all ordinances and appropriations in conflict with the provisions of the ordinance and establishing an effective state. And it comes with the recommendation approval of the ordinance.
Is there a motion for item number four?
Move to approve.
Second.
There is a motion and a second for approval of item number four. Is there any discussion? Councilman Turner.
Yes, I have a few kind of pointed questions to get clarity. So we always have a proposed, what they what they call a deficit. And most time you have a proposed deficit, normally at the end of year, it out it outperforms what is the proposed deficit. Am I kind of correct with that?
Yeah, well, what you're speaking to is when revenues are expenditures exceed revenues, basically. So in this budget, it's approximately four point five million dollars. And every year, even before I got here, it's been that way. But at by the end of the year, it's always been a a positive number. You know, whether it's two million in addition or four million in addition because of the way we're operating, the way the city sets up. We fully fund all of our positions, jobs and positions, and they don't, they're not always filled. For sure. And and I hate to single them out, like for our department, we have approximately twenty six, twenty eight vacant positions, but we have to fully fund them. And and there are tremendous savings as we go through the year.
So this question may not be one you can answer, Mr. Williams, maybe finance or who may who might so over be over the finance department. When I I somewhat first got on council, the proposed deficit was pretty high. It was around eight million plus. And last year it came in projected around three and a half million. And this year, you know, it was a projection that was north of, I think it was seven million, seven point six. So what I want clarity on is if as a council, the entire body has been pushing to have a healthier fund balance. Why would we come in with a projection higher than it was the previous year? Like, I just want to clarify though, how did we get to that and why?
I'll speak to it first and staff feel free to speak. I I I think the main thing, the the four point five million, if you look, it's a. It's almost the exact number what we did in some pay increases. With police and fire was almost four point five, you know, we came we came in and did the seven and four. We were close together at the fire department. Then we have four under contract with the police department. And then there were civilian increases too, which they they sorely need that. So that that kind of accounts for that difference right there in itself.
And I understand that with the raises, because every raise council, we approved it as a whole. But on the flip side, it still was slightly above that four point five. It was seven point six. So my concern is if we kind of have been consistent as a council and kind of saying, and I understand. You might have two or three council members that might differ, but if four more kind of saying, we want a healthier fund balance. You know, why would the projection be higher the following year than what it was the year prior to?
Well, each budget year stands on itself, you know, your revenues and expenditures stand on itself and your programs and expenditures. And this year, we we had a large investment in in capital items. You know, last year we only spent four hundred and thirty five thousand dollars on capital items. This year, we were proposing to spend, what's it, four, almost four million, approximately four million dollars on capital items. Because we, it's time that we buy this, these things that police and fire and public works and they all need to do their jobs. So we need to do that.
Though I understand that, my my pushback still is. Though we look to purchase, make some of those one time purchases, you're also looking to do a bond election that's never been done in over forty three years in Beaumont. And I, my request was for staff to be sensible and and understand the community that we're dealing with. You know, we're raising expenditures during these one time expenses and we're doing something to this magnitude. So for me, yes, I did push back to see some cuts made and Mr. Williams, you guys did a great job. But if that was the direction that the prior council was saying, it's almost why did we have to push back and get us to make the cuts? Versus listening to us in advance and not even proposing those expenses to be that high.
Your one answer. Well. Council member, this was a process that was started months ago with the city council. Where the city council established your priorities, got each one of your priorities. And so you were at the table during the entire process. So, you know, and we listened to you and we do what you you want done. But basically, you know, this is a process that we all have to buy into.
I understand. I just struggle. It was a a a whole, you know, just, I don't mind having these transparent, open conversations. It's not a tack on the administration, but if we're gonna be a council where the majority speaks. It it's extremely important that every council member weighs in on the direction we're going in. One of the biggest problems is when we had this type of dialogue, we sit here quietly. And once we get the budget, we hear complaints and outcry. This is the opportunity to speak in advance and I'm saying in advance, for me, I prefer if we're doing something like a bond election. We're very sensitive to the voters and the amount of expenses we're increasing. I understand that it can be one time expenses, but all these one times expenses, that mandatory that we have to do it right now, considering the amount of money we're talking about doing right now as a city. Me personally, I don't agree with it. And I have said consistently, you know, I want a healthy enough fund balance to be on the safe side, just in case it's been a storm. We can address that and I feel comfortable confident that we have got there and I appreciate you making an adjustment. But my bigger concern is, like I said to finance and staff, why would we come out with that one time expenditure that much higher than? What it was the previous year and we've seen what all took place in the election with the spending.
Yeah, one of the things that I would like to add, council members, last year with the adopted budget, we were. Nine point nine million dollars over the required amount that we were. Supposed to set aside. This budget right now would still nine point two million over the required amount. So we not only meet the the policy requirement of twenty percent, we exceeded by over nine million dollars for. Emergencies and and other things that may come up throughout the year. And, you know, from what I've been told that, you know, when we've had these major. Disasters like the hurricanes, we haven't had to dip into the 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 fund balance. So that's something to keep in mind as as we move forward. But but this city is well over our 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 policy. Our policy is thirty, over thirty million dollars. And and we exceed that at at forty one million dollars in this proposed budget.
I understand that. It's thirty four million dollars, our twenty percent requirement, but it was projected to come around thirty eight million. And again, my consistency is, you know, as a council, I understand individually, we can have different opinions. But as a council, we've been saying, we want to have a healthy fund balance, at least majority since I've been on council. So me, I struggle to see it be at that number the prior year and we come back with a projection higher. And yes, council members spoke up to get some things cut, but I don't see why would even come back higher if it's been consistent, consistency. And this is the level of amount we want to have in our fund balance, want a healthy fund balance.
Can I speak, Mr. Williams? So since the last time we met with the different council that had the wish of increasing the fund balance, I believe we've had. A couple of ambulance have been totaled. So that's an issue. We had to address that. We have police vehicles that are outdated. We had to address that. So the reason why the projection increased because we had needs to address. We can't go out with fewer ambulances than we need. So we were purchasing three ambulances. We acquired an ambulance from an also organization. So those are expenses that also increase. And additionally, we have outdated equipment and information and technology. You have cities experience ransomware and things of that nature. So we felt that we need to protect our infrastructure and I T. So we made a commitment of nine hundred. Fifty eight thousand dollars. So if you subtract the I T equipment from the four point five that we have after switching to finance, then you'll be pretty close to the three point five. So essentially, we thought it was important to secure our I T infrastructure and to make sure that we have public safety vehicles to arrive to the scene when citizens are experiencing an emergency.
And where is that today? I'm not, I'm not upset or opposed to it because it's around the same number that we were at the prior year. But would it been significantly that much more, seven point six? I definitely would have been opposed to that because normally. It would end off that we're in the positive because like you said, similar to the county. You know, a lot of people pay attention to what's going on with the city, but the county is at a not over nineteen million dollar deficit. And you don't hear much conversation going on at all. But the city was proposed to be seven point six million, but as a council, we worked with staff and it came back down three point one million. But, you know, what I ask is we hold everybody at the same accountability straight across the board. We need to be at the county commissioner level, asking the same questions that every, all the citizens come to the city with, because their deficit is proposed a lot more than what the city's is.
Anything else, Councilman Turner?
Not yet. I I'm I'm gonna wait to get into this part. I'm sorry, I've been waiting on this.
All right. Councilman Hilliard.
So I I know that we we've experienced massive amounts of overtime. And so I I I would like to see. The pressure being put on these. The people that are in charge of these departments to see what we can do to cut the overtime. You know, a lot of things have been put forth as far as hiring, because I know we're going to hear about that. But I want to know what we're going to do as a city to to make sure that we don't reach these levels of overtime again. And that we hold these department heads feet to the fire and say, we're we're not going to accept the overtime anymore. What can we do to fix it?
All right. Councilwoman Sherwood.
I'm glad that you brought up the nineteen million dollar deficit at the county level because. I recently read a story where they said they over anticipate expenditures and under anticipate revenues. And I'd just like to know, is that something that everyone does across the board? Is that something that's standard? Because we need to make sure that citizens are aware of what is standard practice.
Yeah, it's always in budgeting. You want to be more conservative on the conservative side and not over promise. So basically, we on departments and it's it's better to over deliver in that situation. What we what we want to be as accurate as possible and use, put dollars to work, you know. These are citizens' dollars. You want to try to put them to work as much as possible, but there's a fine line of balance and walk walking. Putting it to work and having that right fund balance.
Well, I'd like to just commend the city manager and staff on taking into consideration all the moving parts, being proactive on some of the necessary needs. That while may not have been extremely prudent for the time being, it was proactive in what was necessary to be happening, increasing the deficit. And being able to regroup and make the necessary adjustment to accommodate council members' wishes in order to reduce the deficit. And being able to pivot because oftentimes I think we focus on what's not being done and we don't really give a lot of credence to what is being done. And oftentimes this work is a moving target. And I appreciate you being able to be open and be accountable and being accessible and being transparent in the process. And hearing and listening to both the constituents, the staff and the council members, which can oftentimes be very complicated. And I appreciate you all for the work that you're doing. Keep up the good work. It's another great day in Beaumont.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilman Williams.
Yeah, you know, a few weeks ago, I I emailed you, Mr. City Manager, and and kind of expressed my desire to to see that. Fund balance grow and and bring that the deficit to a more palatable number. And, you know, you were quick to respond and and Councilmember Turner sat in that meeting as well and shared in in my concern. And so, you know, I do echo what Councilmember Turner said. I I wish we would have started there, you know, rather than having to request to get there. But thank you for for listening to to my concern and I know others likely shared in that and and bringing that down.
Thank you. Councilman Durio, Councilman, then Councilman Crenshaw.
For transparency for the audience, just a couple of, couple of questions. So you said we're required to have twenty percent of the fund balance as a reserve?
Depending on the fund, twenty percent for general fund and now twenty percent for the water utility fund.
Okay, and 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 we're over that for a general fund?
Yes, we're approximately nine million dollars or so.
And what what's that money, that nine million dollars, what can it be used for?
Anything the council wishes.
So is it a, is it a big benefit to being over twenty, that extra nine million dollars? That money that could be spent on different things? Is it a benefit to having that and not using it?
Is there a benefit to having it and not using it? Well, it's always good to have good reserves, you know, you you want to have.
That twenty percent is the reserve. I'm just talking about the nine million over the twenty percent. What's the what's the benefit of that money sitting there and not providing services to the citizens with that money?
Yeah, it's kind of the fine line I was speaking of, you know, at what point are you overtaxing citizens? Are you taking too much of their money and just putting it in the bank?
Are you taking too much of their money and just putting it in the bank? And are you putting it to use? So that's that fine line to have a healthy fund balance, but also have these dollars put to work for projects and things that citizens need, otherwise, you know.
Having that twenty percent, y'all consider that a healthy fund balance without the nine million?
Yes, that twenty percent is healthy. That's somewhat standard with most cities in Texas. Some go up to twenty-five percent. I mean, I've seen cities and been at cities where, you know, they just wanted to meet their policy if it was twenty-five percent. They met it at twenty-five percent, and they didn't have millions of dollars still in the reserve. They may have had a hundred, a few hundred thousand dollars. So it varies with cities. But yeah, nine million over what the policy says is quite a bit to have.
Great. One other question. What are the, what do you mean when you say one-time expenditures? Is that what you're talking about, like for the IT and the ambulance getting wrecked and stuff like that?
Yes, sir. So one-time expense is something that you purchase once, like a vehicle. You only purchase a vehicle one time, but an employee, you pay them twenty-six times a year each year.
Okay. So would it be like for the ambulance that were wrecked and the protecting IT, would that be something that we wouldn't want to do?
I would want to do it. I would want our public safety employees to have vehicles, and I would want our infrastructure and IT to be protected from cybersecurity purposes.
So even though it's one-time expenditure, it was a needed expenditure?
Yes, sir. These items are considered end-of-life, so Angie probably could explain end-of-life better, but if we don't replace them, they won't be able to be used. The only end-of-life items are included. We didn't fund every IT item, only the ones that are at end of life.
What do you mean when you say end of life?
Angie, can you come explain?
Good afternoon. So for technology equipment and even software, end-of-life will be when a vendor is no longer supporting it. So it's no longer being provided any updates, specifically critical updates for patches or for vulnerabilities. We do, because of our HIPAA, which is our health information, CGIS, which is our police information, PCI, which is our credit card, financial information, we are required by many laws that we have to keep end-of-life equipment updated. Once equipment reaches end-of-life, then if we are not updating that equipment to supported equipment by the vendor, then we are no longer able to run checks for police. We are no longer in compliance to run our credit cards. And so all of that, on top of, if you are not getting vulnerability patches on your equipment, those vulnerabilities allow bad actors to get into your network, and then you end up with a cybersecurity issue.
One other question. End-of-life, does that just apply to IT stuff or, like, say, an excavator out at the landfill is gotten to the point where it's no longer feasible to fix it, and we have to buy another one?
I don't think she's going to be able to answer that.
I was asking-
Capital items have a useful life, so if you buy a piece of equipment, there is an expected range that you're expecting the piece of equipment to be useful for. So equipment do have useful life, and that is how the IT, I mean, the fleet items were decided. We didn't fund every fleet item. We funded the fleet items that are at the end of the useful life and that we're putting more money in to fix it than it costs to repair it. And so if we don't replace the equipment, we're going to be paying all these dollars to fix a cop car that would have been cheaper to just buy a new one.
That's all I've got there.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Crenshaw, if you'd turn your mic on.
Yes, so to echo what Councilman Turner said, by staff coming out with the seven point six million dollar estimated deficit, it did not do any favors to the city or this council in trying to go out and help advocate both for a bond issue or for good government when that kind of an estimate came out. And so what I believe Councilman Turner is trying to say, and I would like to also echo that, is knowing that the council, a majority of the council wants to keep a healthy fund balance and rainy day fund at the higher level, why would staff come out with a seven point six million dollar deficit and put us in the position of being on the defense and having to go to the media and concerned citizens? We got email after email after email. It then puts us in this position of being defensive and having to go out and do that. And it would have been preferred if that number would not have come out and that the reductions of the three point one million that I'm very happy to see, because it makes the four point five much more palable, if that would have happened beforehand. And so I agree with that, and I echo that. And then I want to talk about how the fund balance has been affected lately. But before I get into that and before I forget, we talked earlier about now the city's part of the risk pool, which is great. Why are these ambulances that were destroyed in accidents not filed on the risk pool?
So if the city doesn't carry automobile insurance on the risk pool because it's too expensive, the premium would have been astronomical.
Okay.
The idea is that once the safety program is implemented and our driving becomes better, it may be less expensive, but it was not cost beneficial to add that policy.
Okay. And I'm assuming that the insurance coverage that the people that caused the accidents had was not enough to cover the cost of the ambulance, right?
Correct. So the average cost of ambulance is about, the box alone is four hundred thousand, plus when you get the other parts. It comes in two parts, so the box is one price and then the cab is another price. The average automobile insurance, if they're carrying insurance at all, maxes out around two hundred thousand.
Maxes out around where?
Two hundred thousand. That's if they have good, full coverage.
Right, but I think the Texas minimum on property damage is fifteen.
Yeah, but it's the same, that's, we were talking like property injury, all-inclusive for our total policy. So even the individual, the city employee who was injured, most of the time when we do insurance claims and our employees are injured, we allow our employees to be paid out first before we max out the policy on property.
Understood. Okay, and I just wanted to clarify that because I know that question's going to come up because we talked about, we now have a claims process with TML, and why would we not do that on assets that were damaged by other people? And so in talking about the fund balance, it looks like, this is page three of the handout that was given to council today, on the document titled City of Beaumont General Fund Statement of Revenues. Twenty twenty-four, we went into the reserve fund, three point six million. We were anticipated to go into the reserve fund in twenty twenty-five, three point nine million. And I must wholeheartedly show my appreciation and congratulations to the city manager for the fact that the actual amount that we will go into the reserve fund is not negative, and we are adding two point two million to the reserve fund for twenty twenty-five. So that is a great thing. And with our four point five million twenty twenty-six proposed budget, I am optimistic that like twenty twenty-five started at being three point nine million negative, we will either be able to cancel that out completely. It would be great if it could be positive, like twenty twenty-five was, but at a minimum, hopefully, we will not be at that type of a negative. So here's my question on the four point five, so that I can better understand this and that citizens can better understand this. What, the three percent that we're proposing for a cost of living adjustment for all employees, that three percent, I noticed wages from twenty twenty-five went from eighty-four point five million to ninety point seven million. Does that ninety point seven million dollar figure, Brandon, does that include the three percent cost of living adjustment that's being proposed? Duncan?
It does.
Great. So that's good. Also, and I guess that's around, that's around two point five million, if I do the math correctly. Three percent of eighty-four point five million is two point five million?
No, sir.
No?
The amount for the civilians, I believe, was one point six.
One point six.
One point six, okay. I'm taking all wages, which include-
Foreign officers as well.
Foreign officers, okay, so that's not right. All right. So one point six million is civilian. And then for the percentage of increase in salaries for fire for twenty twenty-six is seven percent, correct? No, seven percent was this year, so it's four percent next year.
It's eleven percent total, because the fire contract was not included in the current twenty-five budget, so the four percent was added to the twenty-six budget.
So out of the ninety point seven million for twenty twenty-six, what is the dollar amount for fire for wage increases?
I'm looking for the email, but I believe it was five million dollars.
Five million. And the twenty twenty-six budget, does it also include a wage increase for police?
Yes, sir.
Four percent, and so what is that dollar amount?
One second. So I think the five million was a total for both police and fire, so it would have been around four million for fire, and then one million or something for police officers.
Okay, and that sounds a lot better. So those added together, that's about a six point six million dollars. And the proposed twenty twenty-six budget is increases in pay for civilian and fire and police?
Yes, sir. So I actually found the email, if you don't mind. So police was one point four million, fire was three point seven million, for a total of five million, one hundred thirty-eight thousand, one hundred ninety-six dollars. And then for civilians, it was one million, six hundred sixty-three thousand, nine hundred sixty-eight dollars.
Okay. And there's one thing that, you know, I want to make a priority, and I know everyone on this council wants to make a priority, which is public safety. So it makes it easier for me to accept a chance that we could have a four point five million dollar budget deficit if I now know that over five million dollars for twenty twenty-six is going to police and fire.
Yes, sir. We also had to fund the vacant positions, so.
Understood, understood. And those positions could remain vacant, but hopefully they won't because that might bring us down to my next point, which is bringing overtime back under control. Mr. City Manager, I know that we made some policy changes with the fire department recently in two different areas that we are optimistic will help us with the overtime issues. What out of twenty twenty-six budget are we budgeting right now for fire overtime?
Is it two million? Well, look it up.
Okay. So my question is-
It's two billion.
Okay, so two million we are budgeting for twenty twenty-six, and what was overtime actually for twenty twenty-five, at least to date? Yet we're not at the end of the fiscal year, we're still a few weeks away?
Oh, that's, one second, that was civilian, sounds like that's too low. So for twenty twenty-five, they're projecting, they've spent seven point three million, in twenty twenty-four, they spent seven point four million. That's total. So fire was four point seven last year.
And when you say last year, you mean twenty twenty-five?
Twenty twenty-four. The current year is four point nine.
Four point nine. Okay, so that is good. That's moving in the right direction. That says that we're going from twenty twenty-five, four point nine million, and we're anticipating we're only going to spend two million in overtime next year, and I hope that that estimate is accurate.
Yes, and some of that came from, of course, from the chief, but some of that came out of the contract negotiations, and some of those were recommendations, suggestions, even by both sides on how we could reduce overtime. So that's how we're able to put in a lower number. We'll see what it comes in at, and hopefully those things, we've made those changes with policy and contractual will assist with that.
Okay. And finally, of the four point five anticipated deficit now for twenty twenty-six, knowing, Mr. City Manager, what we were able to do this year in twenty twenty-five, knowing that we started with an anticipated three point nine million dollar deficit, and we finished two point two million in the black, what do you see in that trend from this year? Do you see that continuing into next year? And I know we can't hold you to that, but again, I'm just looking for some help on how I explain this to concerned citizens that are asking me about the budget. How do I tell them that, look what happened in twenty twenty-five, this is a positive thing, and this is what we think is going to happen in twenty twenty-six?
Yeah, historically, it has. If you look over the last five years, at least, that's the way it's happened every year. It come out, it's happened, came out in the black, for sure. You know, again, this is our best estimate on September the sixteenth, twenty twenty-five. You know, by the time we get to September the sixteenth, twenty twenty-six, it's a different picture because we manage this budget every day. We continue to monitor it, we continue to spend, and we know when to cut back, we know when to do things differently. Yeah, so it's managed every day. It's not just say, you say it and it's going to happen. So it's not just looking at predicting the revenues and expenditures, it's looking at it and having your directors look at it every day. We look at hiring practices, we look at spending practices, and there's a reason it comes in like that, because it's managed and every day to make sure that it comes in in a good place. You know, this is a balanced budget. You know, we've said a lot about deficits, but this is a balanced budget. And if council wants to change that definition again, let's change the definition again. But we play by the rules we're dealt, and the rules we're dealt is by the definition of a balanced budget. This budget is balanced, and you've got sixty-five million dollars above that to spend whatever you choose to spend and want to spend on those dollars. So, you know, we can say this deficit and this four point five million dollars, and how did we get there? But the thing is, the first meeting I had, what council asked for each one of your priorities, and on the one of you mentioned public safety. We have it written down, only one person mentioned, Mike, mentioned public safety. And now public safety is a big issue when we put a lot of money into public safety, and that's why that happened. But basically, it's that way because I took your priorities and built a budget around those priorities and what you said you wanted to see in a budget.
Thank you. All right, I know, before I move to you, Councilman Turner, I would just like to address, you know, I think also that's important that we haven't talked about is our increase in sales tax and property taxes, because there's moving variables here. And if you look back at our history, we have historically projected sales tax and property taxes below what they came in because we would rather be conservative in those numbers than liberal. And obviously, that can't be guaranteed, but I think it is an important factor. And given the fact that the reserves have been raised, as in two thousand seventeen, they were at ten percent, there are cities such as Houston that has a three percent reserve. I think Austin's reserve for their city, their general fund, is seven percent. I think Austin's reserve for their city, their general fund is seven percent. So, you know, we have a significant, I'm not comparing us to those cities, but those cities still have the, you know, they're operating with those. So I, I think we've proven, and certainly, when you, when you hire a city manager, because as a council, we get monthly financials on all the departments. They're, they're in-depth documents, and you really need to be educated if you're going to be able to understand them. But, you know, I've gone through that process, but now with, with City Manager Williams, you know, he's proved that he manages the budget well. And I, I think that's an important factor because when you look back at the history of our budgets, you know, we use the term deficit, which in fact, they're not. And, you know, I, I will point to the state of Texas, which is now sitting on a twenty-five billion dollar surplus, I believe. And it's, one reason is because they have so many restrictions that through laws that have been passed, they can't spend that money back. And to me personally, that sounds like over taxation when our state is sitting on top of twenty-five billion dollars. And I know the state would spend more if the laws were a little bit different from my understanding and talking to our state representatives. So I hate to hamper this city anymore because I feel like we have ample reserves and, but it is the will of council, and I think the city manager has met that. But when we're above twenty-five percent right now projected, you know, because when people hear deficit budget, they think there's not enough money. And the city has to have enough money. We don't get to print money. And we have continuously done that, and even through challenging times. So, but, you know, I, you heard earlier, which can be hard to track, but we have employees, it's hard to be fully staffed. In a city the size of Beaumont, it's not ever going to be fully staffed because even as you're hiring, people are leaving. But we have to treat this budget as if everybody is fully employed. So we have to project that. That's another reason why the numbers go down. And certainly with projects, as we see here, sometimes projects finish less or they finish more. And certainly when it comes to overtime, a lot of that falls on the will of council too. I, I just want to, I don't recall, you know, when we went through this budget process, and it's the nature of things, and from the, from the citizens that came forward or the residents that came forward and from council, we're, other than when we see a, what we call a deficit, we talk about it, but we're not ever suggesting, well, you know, cut that, cut that. I, I mean, you know, from any department, oftentimes we say, do you have enough employees? You know, we, we need more employees, but we don't hire those because we're, we're managing a budget. And so, you know, I think also keep that in mind as a city council, we can, because I, I have no doubt that our administration will follow our lead because I've been doing this two years and they have without fail. But, you know, we've got to be careful on the message that we're sending. And I know, I, I haven't been a part of a council in the last two plus years that has indicated they want to reduce services or reduce pay for any people. And so I, I think that's, I think that's important because when we're talking about increasing services and we clearly have to continue to increase pay to keep people here, there's going to be increased cost, but we're also having that increased revenue. So, and also, and, you know, these are all good questions, and I, you know, I'm going to, I'm going to suggest on future things, this is also good that we can prepare emails so that staff doesn't have to look right now. You know, that we can plan ahead a little bit on our, on our questions. But I appreciate the job that the administration done, and I also appreciate the job of, that our council does because it is true. Our phone rings a lot and people have concerns that we have to be able to justify. And I know from my standpoint, you know, we, we are very fiscally solid, and it's been reflected in our budget. And, and I applaud our, our city for being able to do that. Councilman Turner, I think you had another question.
Yes, sir. I, I kind of, I kind of like the fact that you did say it's not a deficit. But Mayor, if it's not a deficit, me personally, our definition, our definition needs to match what we're actually saying it is because we're saying it's not a deficit, but the definition says something otherwise. So me, if we're going to change the definition, I support changing the definition.
But I will say, our current does support what we've done. It's on recurring expenses that they not exceed our, our expected revenue. So all it's allowing, it does allow us to spend reserves above, or surplus above our reserves. And I think we ought to be able to have that because we have a reserve that's set. We can always increase the reserve. This council has the authority to increase the reserves to twenty-five percent, thirty percent. We can pick that number. And we went from ten percent in two thousand seventeen to twenty percent. And I think it's important that we send a correct message because from my standpoint, I'm pretty fiscally conservative. And sometimes people say, well, I don't think so. But I think it's a waste of money to have money sitting in a savings account for a city that, you know, that's not being used when we have real needs in our city. And I think we all experience those real needs, and I think that's where the friction is.
Depression, that might.
Please. And, and clearly, I will say, when, when budgets are made, the council and the city administration can monthly make changes to it. We would see if a COVID's coming. We would respond to those things. We're not locked in to doing exactly this. In October, we can change our budget. We can reduce it, we can increase it. So let's keep in mind that this is a roadmap that we're following, and based on prior roadmaps, the, the city administration has done an excellent job of managing that. And my reflect, my fault is, I think as long as we have a balanced budget on recurring revenues and, you know, access to our surpluses in determining what our reserves want to be, if there's a need to increase them to twenty-five percent. And based on studies I've seen, I think that would be excessive, but I would certainly, I would prefer to have that conversation rather than these types of conversations where all of a sudden we're wanting more money, but it's, it's kind of arbitrary. You know, because we are, we are well adored by nine million dollars and, you know, and nine million dollars is a lot more than ninety-eight thousand dollars. And it's a lot of money to me. So when it's sitting on the sidelines, when we have needs, I think it's important for us to consider that. With that, you're still holding your yellow paper, so I wasn't able to out-talk Councilman Turner, so.
I, I think, I think we probably need to workshop how we, as a new council, feel about it because, again, it's a whole new body, and I'm open to dialogue and how we all feel about it. I think that's how we reach a, a point where we get a projected, a projected number of this, when you have different council members feeling certain ways. And the way this process works is, is four more, if not the majority, feel in the same way. And I think that's what has got us to this point. And in fairness to staff, we need to be on the same page now before you guys come back with another budget on next year. So one thing that I want to talk about was prior to me voting for this is employee evaluations. We, we've talked about this for quite some time, and the reason I'm concerned about it is, you know, with employee evaluations, I'm strictly looking at, for me, it's our leadership. You know, our, our department heads, our, you know, upper management, you know, where are we going as far as directions? Are we leading with proactive decisions? Are all our departments conservative in their budget if not explaining to council, give a plan to action of how, similar with the overtime? Give clear direction and make timely decisions in reference to that? I think one thing that's important is, you know, if council, you know, is pushing in one direction and you have staff doing something different, we need to make sure we're on the same page a hundred percent and moving in the same direction. What are the proposed ways to be more efficient? At, all at the same time, we, we've put a lot on our city manager, but I, I urge council to weigh in as far as what direction you want to go in because it puts staff in a situation now where we come down to making these decisions. If, if two people are talking and everybody else isn't saying anything, now they're not clear on what direction they want to go in. And my lastly is, yeah, we want to take care of police and fire, but we also need to kind of look at some things that we want to return with that being the highest expenditure. You know, we kind of want to set some standards. So, so for me with, you know, hiring, you know, I like to see some diversity in hiring. You know, I like to see, like, things with the police, like the PAL and the DARE programs, where are we at with some of those community activities? I think it's great what we're doing in the parks, but what are we physically doing to impact and change the narrative for high students? People may view those entities. And overtime with, with the police department as well. Fire, overtime is definitely my number one priority. Hiring practices in writing, and when will we be able to implement that? And just like our police officers are doing these community events out in the community, I like to see more of a community approach from the fire department and see them in our schools as, as well as doing events throughout the community, kind of publicizing it. So yes, that's our largest expenditure, but, you know, I like to see a little bit more of those departments because with police, almost everywhere I go, the, these citizens about the call volume, how we changed, how we do the call volume with, you know, reporting some of their accidents, whether it be a wreck in the parking lot, they report it on their own, or whether it be a wreck and they don't, they don't come out because it's not high priority. We have to explain that almost throughout the community. And a lot of citizens, since from when I've been explaining it, they're not happy with that. So, you know, we, we just need to have some of this dialogue where it's open. Yeah, we're increasing the, the wages, but we got to be honest, even though it may be public safety, that citizens are giving us pushback about some of these things. And as a council, we, we, we can't be scared politically to say that.
All right. And did you want to respond?
I'll say some things. The employee evaluation, we have that, that's getting ready to kick off. We have draft copies of those evaluations where our next step would be bringing people in to train directors on how to properly do evaluations because you can often get into more trouble legally if you don't do them properly and, and things are done. So that's our next step, that, that will be rolled out for the end of the year. I'm a, I'm a strong proponent of employee evaluations, and I said that when I got here. And so we're just getting to the point to, to be able to get that done. I guess in the future, it would be good if council said a lot of these things at the beginning, so we'll know what to expect. We don't know, always know what to expect. We, we have four new peoples, we have no idea what your things are that you prioritize. That's why I asked that question upfront, what are your priorities? I, I mean, that's why we do this. And no, nobody else said that I want a large, larger fund balance either in that priorities up there, so it would be a priority. But you said some other things you wanted to see. So the budgets were still a work in progress until this point. That's why we said, continue to give us that feedback, and I appreciate that. I really appreciate that feedback, and it was pretty awesome when you're getting it. But, yeah, we, we've got a lot of things to do, you know. Again, budgets, budgeting is an imprecise science, you know? It's, it's your best guess and your best estimate to get started with and, and get those things in place. You know, cities are not businesses, they're not like a business. They're like twelve businesses in one. So you have twelve major things that you do, not just one thing that you specialize in. So we have to be, be able to accommodate all those areas. And what we do is public work, just police, competing against police and fire, you know? It's planning, competing against parks. So these dollars, we don't have infinite dollars to spend, and it's competition for those dollars. And we just have to prioritize and, and put those dollars to where we best fit them and where you would like to see them. Thanks for the feedback.
Councilman Hilliard?
What was budgeted for fire overtime in twenty twenty-four?
I'll have to look that up.
What did we actually spend?
In twenty twenty-four for fire, there's been four million, seven hundred twenty-five thousand dollars.
So would it be a fair guess to say we budgeted about two million?
Yes, sir.
Okay. What about twenty twenty-five? How much was the, how much did we spend in overtime for fire in twenty twenty-five?
Four point nine.
Four point nine. What do we budget?
Two million.
Okay. So I would like to hear from Chief what his plan is to bring this overtime into correction. It looks like we're, we're still headed in the north. I realize we need employees, but what is your plan of action to, to, to get us the employees we need? I know there's some things on the table, some of the things that the council's been talking about, about allowing the, the kids of our city to take the, the test. So where are we on that? How are we going to curve? Because we are budgeting two million, but we seem to keep hitting the four million dollar mark. So what is it that, what, what plans are being acted to make sure that we hit the, the two million dollar mark and not the five million dollar mark at the end of twenty twenty-six?
Before the chief starts, we budgeted two point eight million dollars for fire in twenty-six.
Okay.
We increased it nearly nine hundred thousand dollars.
And we're right now at four point nine?
Yes, sir.
So we're short.
Well, I'm just correcting that it's not two million dollars.
Okay. But we're still short. So I'm just curious, what is our plan of action to, to curve this overtime that we're, we seem to have a, a problem with?
It's not a problem. We're trying, trying to hire individuals, we're getting ready to roll out our fire cadet program. In the last contract, the hiring practice falls upon us and the city. We've also looked at more recruiting. We're now in the process of a recruiting video that we're going to be rolling out. We're now advertising, which we have been advertising, in three states, Louisiana, Oklahoma, and Texas.
What about our local kids? What about?
Those are the ones that we are targeting. We are participating in the rural program.
What about the test? Allowing kids here to take the test, and if they pass, have a chance to, if I'm not mistaken, I think that, y'all both did that. You took the test and were granted the access to go to.
I think that I'll have to advise the council that in that particular deal, it only required one certification. Now requires both fire and EMT. EMT being your most challenging deal.
Right.
We're looking at about a forty percent, well, actually about a fifty-five percent failure rate on the EMT national registry, which can be very, very challenging.
Okay. Okay. I just, you know, I just want to know going forward that this seems to be something that's out of hand and we haven't.
We are continuing to address the situation.
It's been three years.
And in the last two months, I've managed to hire twelve new firefighters.
Okay.
In fact, I sworn seven two weeks ago.
Are they single or dual?
They were dual cert.
Okay.
We, for this firefighter position, it has to be firefighter slash EMT.
So do you feel that, that offering the test, sending the kids to cadet school, and then allowing them to take EMT basics would be a, a, a good way to fill our ranks?
The way that we're going to do it is, is that we're going to hire EMT certified since the failure rate is about fifty-five percent. We will in turn send them to LIT, who we partner with. And you're looking at about a ninety-two to ninety-three percent success rate on the fire academy.
Okay. Perfect.
And my understanding is, well, I'll, I'll finish it after you.
Well, I, I can say that at one time, we were only competing with Houston and Baytown. Now we're competing for employees with Houston, Baytown, Jersey City, all the ESDs in Harris County, Montgomery County. So that has increased our competition also for employees.
Even with the pay increase?
The pay increase just went into effect. I can say that it is going to have a positive effect.
Okay.
And I think it's important, and I don't have this figure in front of me, but I would anticipate that fire was about two and a half million dollars under budget for their salary because of the position.
Salary's not spent.
So, so that's where the money comes in. And, you know, and that, that's a factor that certainly the management is aware of when they're budgeting. Because again, I, I found my years here, and I was a part of the twenty-three, twenty-four budget, that they came, that although it's a deficit, as we're calling it, it fin, both, they finished with surpluses.
Yeah. And, and let me explain that also. Within the last, in 2022, we went, we were running five med units. Today we went, uh, we run a minimum eight med units every day, uh, for a call volume. That's 80% medical calls. And that was the direction that the current county at that time wanted to go to make sure that we didn't have calls waiting on that. So we did increase by manning the med units with firefighters on overtime.
Okay, I, I'm, I'm just, because you see this and that's one of the things they talk about. And so I, I want to, I want to be able to say, hey, we're doing something.
Absolutely.
To correct it and, uh, you know, get this out of the air and say, hey, we're, we're trying to correct it. We're trying to hire, but I just kind of want to know the direction that we're going so that when people ask me.
Sure.
I can say this is what I believe the chief and the city is, what their plan is because we would like to see more kids from our area become part of our.
Absolutely, with a $73,000 starting salary, that, that's a desirable salary.
Absolutely.
It really, really is. But you also have to figure councilperson that in the next probably year and a half, two years, I projected 27 retirements because aged out. So that has to factor in also. We hire, they retire and our resignations and, uh, have slowed up.
Good.
Because they're coming back into the workforce.
And, and I just, you know, we're, we're trying to do everything we can.
Yes, sir.
To try help not only you, but also the police and, and to, to bring up our kids from our area, to let them be a part of our fire and our police. And, and so that's a, it's real important to me that we, I realize that we need to find dual certs, but it's real important to me that we give our kids here an opportunity too, that we give them purpose and we give them an opportunity to be a part of our, our, our team here.
Absolutely, but I want to instruct the councilperson also that they have to prepare themselves.
I, I agree.
Also, because I am not going to lower the standards in order to fill positions. So we do stress, I do stress that our youth in our city have to prepare themselves for these careers. And that includes, uh, clear criminal history, drug use and things associated with hiring in, in these positions.
Right, and that's what I believe the mayor said that, and Councilman Turner is, is seeing a bigger presence, you know?
Absolutely.
And start at the third grade level. And, uh, you know, you, you go into these cafeterias, you see Army, Navy, Air Force Marines, but why do we not see more firemen, more police officers? Not just on a month or two months, but on a reoccurring basis so these kids say, hey, that's what I want to do. And this is, I need to get my life right so that I can do this.
Yes, and in the last, uh, three years, we have participated in BIC's ROR program, where the firefighters actually go and read to the second graders.
That's.
So we have had a presence in our elementary school. And that is another issue that has, uh, plagued us also is that, um, we've had, when we do give a test, they struggle, struggle to both pass the written and the physical agility test. We've made some adjustments on our physical agility test because again, they have not prepared themselves.
I understand.
Okay, thank you, chief. I, I think at this point we're getting a little bit offline on our budget and I just would like to go ahead and call the vote. Everybody's had an opportunity to speak on this and we can certainly have a work session, but, uh, they're all budget related, yes, sir.
You mentioned earlier that we have to fund vacant positions. Um, do we, when, when we have to fund those positions that are vacant, do we also have to fund their, their pension and retirement and stuff like that if they're vacant?
So if you recall, council approved a resolution, um, with the, uh, with the understanding that you would fund any vacant positions, any fire vacant positions that were vacant on September 30th, uh, every year until, um, the pension was solvent. You also agreed to increase the pension, uh, by 2% this year and then 1% the following year in that resolution. So, um, that agreement was between the, the council and the, the Fire Fighters Relief Fund, uh, at the direction of another of the guys and advisement of the Texas Pension Review Board.
So that's also a part of the upcoming budget?
It is.
It is, we, we do fund pension and benefits for every position vacant or filled.
Is that just for, uh, do you do that for civilians also?
Yes, sir, not just firefighters, we do that for civilians also. The, the change with firefighters is we'll be paying the pension contribution, whether it's filled or not. That'll be the only change, but we typically fund all benefits and salaries associated with every position.
But if they're not funded in the other positions, it doesn't cost the city money?
Yes, sir, so for fire, we're paying regardless of it's filled or not, but for civilians and police officers, if the position is not filled, we don't have an expense to pay.
All right, with that, I'm going to go ahead and, uh, we have a motion in a second. We've had much discussion, all those, does this need to be a recorded vote?
Take a record vote.
Okay, on item number four.
They're going to all be record votes, everyone.
Four, five, and six need to all be a record vote.
Will all be record votes.
Okay. I'll call the vote.
Mayor West.
Uh, for the budget.
Mayor Pro Tim Turner.
For the budget.
Councilmember Durio.
For the budget.
Councilmember Hilliard.
For the budget.
Councilmember Williams.
Four.
Councilmember Sherwood. And Councilmember Crenshaw.
Four.
Thank you.
Mr. City Manager, would you read the agenda item five, please?
Yes, mayor, let me get to it. Counselor to consider resolution adopting the fiscal year 2026 capital program and it comes with the recommendation of approval of the resolution.
Is there a motion for item number five?
Move to approve.
Second.
There is a motion in a second for item number five. Is there any discussion? All right, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed, the motion will carry. Mr. City Manager, would you take us?
Record vote. They're all going to be record votes.
Oh, yeah. I just forgot.
It's okay. Mayor West.
Write it down.
Uh, I'm, I'm for it, yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Turner.
Four.
Councilmember Durio.
Four.
Councilmember Hilliard.
Four.
Councilmember Williams.
Four.
Councilmember Sherwood. And Councilmember Crenshaw.
Four.
Thank you.
Would you take us into the public hearing, Mr. City Manager?
Yes, mayor. Counselor to conduct the public hearing on the 2025, which is the fiscal year 2026 proposed tax rate.
And the public hearing is now open?
I don't have anyone signed up, mayor.
Okay. All right, with that, I'll close the public hearing and, uh, would you read item number six, Mr. City Manager?
Counselor to consider an ordinance accepted the appraised role and approving the property tax rate for the tax year 2025, which is fiscal year 2026. And based on its taxable value, property tax rate of .659663 per $100 valuation of the tax year is proposed and a record vote.
Okay, and so do we have a motion on the first part of item six as just read?
So again, the motion, and you'll see it at your day, is for any councilperson that wants to make a motion, the motion has to be read, um, exactly, and it's actually three votes. So the first motion will be read and then there's be a second motion and then a third motion.
We'll have a record vote after each one.
On each one, that's correct.
Yeah, I, I move that the property, property tax rate be increased by the adoption of a tax rate of .659663 per $100 valuation, which is effectively a 4.84% increase.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
There is a motion in a second, uh, for motion is read. Is there any discussion? Councilman Turner?
Just for staff, if, I understand that it has to be read that way, but if we're not increasing it, can somebody better explain why does this say increase?
So the 4.84% increase is the difference between the no new revenue rate and the proposed rate.
Based on increased property values.
Yeah, and whether, uh, you increase the tax rate or not, if you, if you're bringing in more money than you did the previous year, state legislature mandated a few years ago that you have to read this in as an increase.
And I think it's important that we're stating the why because that the, the average person watching, we're saying the tax rate is remaining the same, but we're reading it in completely different. And I understand why based upon the state law and what we're allowed to do. But I just think even in the definition, it would have just better helped me not to even have to ask that question if that was even in there, so I appreciate you explaining it.
Thank you, Councilman Turner. Councilman, uh, Durio, you got it? Any other questions? All right, with that, may we have a record vote, please?
Mayor West.
I'm for it.
Mayor Pro Tim Turner.
Four.
Councilmember Durio.
Four.
Councilmember Hilliard.
Four.
Councilmember Williams.
Four.
Councilmember Sherwood.
Four.
And Councilmember Crenshaw.
Four.
Thank you.
All right, now we'll move to item number seven, may.
You will not.
Oh, we got.
We are item number six.
Yeah, we, you're right.
There's a, there's a second vote for any councilperson who wants to make the second vote and then a record vote will be taken.
I would like to make a motion that we take a record vote on the maintenance and operations rate of 0.478628 cents per $100 valuation.
All right, there is a motion, is there a second?
Second. LaDonna.
There is a motion in a second for the item read for the maintenance and operation. Is there any discussion? May we have a record vote, please?
Mayor West.
For.
Mayor Pro Tim Turner.
Four.
Councilmember Durio.
Four.
Councilmember Hilliard.
Four.
Councilmember Williams.
Four.
Councilmember Sherwood. And Councilmember Crenshaw.
Four.
Thank you.
All right, now we're going to move into the final vote of item number six. And, uh, if.
I would like to make a motion, we take a record vote on a debt service rate of 0.181035 cents per $100 valuation.
Is there a second?
Second.
There is a motion in a second for the debt service rate as read. Uh, is there any discussion? All right, with that, may we have a record vote?
Mayor West.
For.
Mayor Pro Tim Turner.
Four.
Councilmember Durio.
Four.
Councilmember Hilliard.
Four.
Councilmember Williams.
Four.
Councilmember Sherwood. And Councilmember Crenshaw.
Four.
Thank you.
Uh, Mr. City Manager, will you now, we'll move into item number seven.
Counselor to consider an ordinance ratifying the budgeted property tax increase reflected in the fiscal year 2026 budget.
Is, uh, is there a motion for item number seven?
Move to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, there is a motion in a second for item number seven, is there any discussion? All right, with that, may we have a record vote?
Mayor West.
I'm for it.
Mayor Pro Tim Turner.
Four.
Councilmember Durio.
Four.
Councilmember Hilliard.
Four.
Councilmember Williams.
Four.
Councilmember Sherwood.
Four.
And Councilmember Crenshaw.
Four.
Thank you.
Mr. City Manager, would you please take us into the work session?
Counselor to review and discuss homelessness. HCM Boone will lead that discussion.
At this point, I'm going to go ahead and say we'll take a, uh, 10-minute recess. So 10-minute recess, we shoot for being back here at 4:12. And we'll have roll call at that point.
Mayor West.
Present.
Mayor Pro Tim Turner.
Here.
Councilmember Duryo.
Here.
Councilmember Hilliard.
Here.
Councilmember Williams.
Here.
Councilmember Sherwood.
Here.
Councilmember Crenshaw.
Here.
Thank you.
All right, we are back. And Assistant City Manager Chris Boone is about to do a presentation. Thank you, sir.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Uh, good afternoon, Mayor and Council. The purpose of today's work session is to review and discuss, uh, the issue of homelessness within the city of Beaumont. Uh, more specifically focusing on, um, our recently adopted camping ordinance. Of course, homelessness is not an issue that is unique to the city of Beaumont. Uh, most, every city of any size in the country is struggling with it, uh, try to come up with the solutions, which as y'all realize, uh, is one of the more complicated issues in our society today. But again, the purpose of today's work session is really to focus on, you know, what we've done in terms of the enforcement of the camping ordinance in the last year. So as mentioned here, and again, in response to the concerns about really particularly public health and safety, uh, council adopted, uh, the camping ordinance uh, just about a year ago. Um, and again, the concern being folks living really within neighborhoods in many cases, uh, without running water, without sanitary conditions, uh, cooking food and accumulating rubbish, uh, and debris, in some cases very close, uh, close proximity to other, uh, homes. So again, focusing on enforcement of the camping ordinance, um, what have we done in the first year? The first thing we did is really establish a working task force made up of multiple departments, uh, to, uh, handle this issue and forces, force it in a efficient way as possible. Uh, first things we do when we, uh, come across camping violations is we put signs out. And so that's a little hard to read there, but the yellow sign, uh, is what our staff will put out, just letting folks know, giving them ample notice, uh, that they may be in violation and they need to, uh, take care of their issues. Again, we also distribute literature, um, to let folks know, uh, they may be in violation. And then there's a process for re-inspecting and inspecting, um, especially taking care of vital, uh, if we come across items that are of special, uh, value, uh, we have a process to, uh, track and hold those until we can try to get them back to the individuals in question. As mentioned, there's a working task force. Uh, we re, we meet on occasion, uh, but really on a almost daily basis between police department, uh, public health, code enforcement, parks, library, uh, even partnering with Tech dot DD6, solid waste, et cetera, uh, all working in partnership to enforce this issue. Uh, one of the issue, one of the, um, efforts we've made recently too is uh, planning community development. Uh, Jess Prince was here earlier talking about the caper. Uh, she was instrumental in getting some funding to, uh, some of the providers on McFadden to get some security cameras installed and then connect those to the real crime cr- crime center. Um, so kind of statistics, um, before I jump into these, I will note that, uh, police department specifically has had more than, uh, 100 calls for service in this area. And, and really they, if you drive by there at any regularity, you will see a police presence riding through. Um, so want to point out that that's being done in addition to code enforcement, um, doing a lot of ride-throughs as well as other staff. Statistically though, what have we done so far? Um, two abandoned RVs, uh, that folks may have been occupying were tagged and towed. As mentioned, solid waste is critical to this effort. Every Tuesday they go through and they remove debris in high-traffic areas. Um, the photograph in front of you, of course, is, uh, McFadden there in front of the, um, Salvation Army's uh, facility. Every Thursday Parks cleans the streets and sidewalks in this area. Um, this is, uh, another photograph. Um, I'll jump back and just show you, you know, that's, that's kind of a before photograph and you can jump and see this is more an a- after. Um, but it is a constant ongoing, uh, effort. Forty, 54 locations, uh, of violations on private property have been identified. If you notice these locations here, these are actually sidewalks, um, the neutral ground, the streets, uh, that are being addressed here. Going back to private property, 54 locations identified. Thirteen of those private property locations have been declared public nuisance by city council over the last year. Uh, of those eight have been abated by the owner, um, and the balance are working their way through the, uh, uh, order process in district court. Staff has worked with private property owners because again, the camping ordinance, uh, not only addresses those that are causing the issues, but also private property owners have a hand in how we try to address this issue. So we work with the private property owners to help them get no trespass affidavits on files. And that enables us, uh, to work with, uh, police department and other departments to try to get those specific issues addressed. As you know, we've had some issues, um, continue to pop up in parks, particularly Weiss Park downtown, um, has been an issue. Here's some before and after photographs of Weiss Park. Uh, you can see we had some tents, um, popped up and they, they, you know, they kind of pop up off and on regularly. But again, as mentioned, it's a consist, consistent, ongoing effort. So this is a photograph of, uh, Weiss after the cleanup. This is an example of a home that was vacant. This is in the Oaks Historic District. Uh, of course, no one's living in the home, um, and so a homeless individual just kind of hung a sheet from the front porch and started living there. And so this one's a little bit trickier because we have to work, work, find a property owner, um, or work with a property owner to try to get their cooperation. Uh, but again, with this accumulation of this material, uh, we eventually can clean it up ourselves. So here's an after photograph of that location. A thousand block of, uh, North Street. Again, kind of a before photograph. You can see the yellow sign posted again, giving ample opportunity for folks in the area to realize that they may be in violation of the ordinance. And this is an after photograph. This is 4215 East Lucas, the area wooded area behind Home Depot. Um, this is a before photograph, an after photograph. You can see dramatic improvement, but again, it is an ongoing effort. This, this has been cleaned up off and on for quite a while. Uh, 1575 South, this is before photograph, after photograph. You know, those, sometimes we have cooperation from the property owners, some quick times we don't. Uh, this is some examples of some of those cases. Um, this is at 548 North Second Street. So the property owner is deceased, um, not been probated. And so that can be an additional struggle for staff to try to resolve those issues. Here's another 2240 NLK, uh, property to declare a nuisance, um, but the property owner is just not communicative. So again, it takes us that effort, extra effort to try to get an order, uh, to allow the city and its contractors to move in and clean up. And this, um, I'm not going to give the address. Uh, there is some ongoing issues with this property, but I did want to show the council this particular camp. If you look to the left, you'll see a single-family home. You look to the right, you'll see a camp that's been set up. This is some additional photographs. You can see tents. You can see porta-potties. There's no running water, no sanitary sewer. If you look just to the right, that's the adjacent, that's the backyard of a homeowner, uh, with the porta-potties that are stacked up against their backyard. This is a view from the next street over with the homeowner's uh, view of the front property. If you're looking down the street, there's Sixth, just beyond those trees, that's where the camp is. So just wanted to give you a concept of the, the proximity of some of these camps to homeowners, to single-family homes. So looking forward, again, this is the kind of the conclusion of next, conclusion of year one, and we're continuing to, uh, to tweak our methodology, our operating procedures, uh, but it is an ongoing, uh, effort to try to abate these issues. Uh, looking at next steps, I know there's been some discussion recently, um, on council and beyond about what, what needs to happen. As I mentioned, continued enforcement. Uh, we are in the process of setting up, uh, internal staff meeting with, um, some other key stakeholders in the region, county, Jefferson County, the Regional Planning Commission. And I'll just pause there and just say that, you know, we, we already participate. Of course, the mayor has the mayor's coalition on homelessness. There's also a, out of the Regional Planning Commission is the Southeast Texas Coalition for the Homeless, which is a, a longstanding working group that, um, offers a, um, kind of a communication group, uh, amongst providers. What this is, is something new that we're embarking on, which is, uh, a more, a more targeted and concentrated discussion with some of our partners in government at the planning commission level as well as the county. Um, because as we all know, we in the city of Beaumont, we, we, we tend to be taking the brunt of this issue, uh, because we have a lot of folks, as we've heard anecdotally and otherwise, they may, um, be dropped off in Beaumont, um, from other jurisdictions. Um, regardless, they may be sent to a medical facility here in Beaumont and then be released. And so, um, Beaumont is taking the brunt of this issue. And so we're, we're looking in different ways that some of our surrounding neighbors can help us resolve the issue. Um, and then there's been some discussion recently about is there a better location, uh, for some of these providers? Many of the photographs I showed you earlier, um, you know, are in the McFadden area here, close to the, really the gateway of downtown. And so, um, you know, we've had some preliminary conversations with Salvation Army, some other place. Um, and, you know, I, I guess we've heard some mixed comments back from them in terms of an interest. Of course, there would be a cost involved. Uh, some of y'all may be aware, we, the city, we budgeted for and we explored the possibility of doing a primitive homeless camp, um, somewhere in the city. I know there was some talk recently about establishing some, some facility, uh, somewhere maybe in a more industrial location. Um, for those of y'all who don't know, we, we did explore the primitive camp idea, but the more we learned from other jurisdictions, uh, the more we learned that while it sounds like an easy fix or a quick fix, the, the initial cost is just the beginning. The ongoing cost of not just maintaining the camp, making sure you have adequate security, um, you know, you're not running afoul of, of all kinds of issues, but make, make sure you have adequate security and sanitary conditions. You know, that plus case management by local providers, that needs to fall on somebody. And so everything we've, we've seen from other jurisdictions is that can, that can easily run into at least a million dollars a year ongoing costs. And so based on some of those findings, that's why we did not move forward with that primitive camp idea. But, um, you know, as we look at this last point, um, you know, we're, we're exploring all, all alternatives again, because it is a very complicated and, uh, complex issue. So I guess with that, I would just kind of open it up for questions or discussions. But really the gist of it was try to provide a update on, on our enforcement efforts over the last year.
Thank you, Assistant City Manager Boone. And, uh, yes, Councilman Turner.
Uh, we did a cost analysis of, we're going out and cleaning these facilities as far as staff, manpower- We did a cost analysis of, we're going out and cleaning these facilities as far as staff, manpower, even our police department enforcing the ordinance of no camping. Have we did a cost analysis overall of what it's costing the city? Because on one hand, we're saying, we're looking at budgeting roughly a million dollars a year to maintain something, but if we're spending upwards close to it, it may be logical to explore that option. So at least you have something to do. Have we done that?
Short answer is no, but I think it's a good idea. Now that we're, we have our standard operating procedures up, it's probably a good idea to A, estimate what we spent this past year, and then look forward, you know, kind of project what we're spending in the future. Because yes, if you add staff time, I mean, just the cleanup is one thing, but the staff time is significant.
And my follow-up is, these providers, me personally, I don't think it was a good idea a long time ago to approve it in locations next to business, but we can't control where we're at. So these providers, what can take place if they are not willing to move locations or go to another location? Me personally, I support this being at the Dream Center. I don't think it's just a city issue. I think it's a county issue, and like you said earlier, most of the residents, they bring, well, most of the outlying cities bring the issue here. So, you know, when the county, when we did the mental health facility, I do recall the city kicking in money to support that initiative. So where we at as far as, you know, location? Because every time we discuss location, every ward council member, since I've been on council, it's been an issue. So that's why, me personally, I think the Dream Center is a good location. And I kind of feel like it's being utilized, but I think it could be utilized a lot more efficiently.
Yes, sir. So when we were originally looking at the primitive camp, Jess and I went down and we toured the Dream Center. We met with their executive director, and it's a great facility. They have a lot of capacity, at least space-wise. But they were not interested at that time in serving as a place for a primitive camp. Now, is there a way for us to come up with some other version of that? And that's why I mentioned we're going to, we are setting up that meeting in the next several weeks, and we're going to include some discussion with the representative of the Dream Center.
All right, Councilman Williams, then Councilman Durio. I think everybody will get a chance to talk.
Whenever you show these before and afters and you clean up the site, where are you finding, I mean, they have to go somewhere. Where are they going? Are they, I mean, you clean it up, they can no longer be there. Where do they end up then?
That's always the question, is where do they go? And so...
Is it just kind of, they move from one site to the next?
You know, without the case management, it's tough to track, you know, individuals, where they're going. You know, we hear anecdotally, the short answer is they shift around from location to location. If you look at, you know, this photograph, for example, as you can imagine, some individuals have things that are of very high quality, or very high value to them in terms of clothes, medicines, et cetera. But a lot of it that we clean up is just kind of this, and it's just trash and litter.
And so when you enforce it, is it the property owner that, you know, faces some?
Potentially, potentially. So what we do is we start with the individuals who are there. In other words, saying, you're, you know, this is a violation of the camping ordinance. And so we would start with them, and if we can get them to move on and get it cleaned out, we do. If that's not successful, we will contact the property owner and say, look, are you aware of this is going on? Do you have an affidavit in no trespassing? Can we help you procure that? Which in turn aids us to get it cleaned up, or encourage them to clean it up. But as mentioned in the presentation, some of the property owners are reluctant.
And do we have any idea what's going on with our homeless population? Is it growing? I mean, does there, do we track that, or do we know where we?
Yeah, so HUD mandates, it's called a PIT or Point in Time Count, and they do it every January usually. The latest statistics, looking back, twenty-twenty-three was about two thirty-five. Twenty-twenty-four, it went up to above four hundred. This past year, most recently in January twenty-twenty-five, it's down to one thirty-seven.
Okay, and then I just have, when you talk about the primitive campsite, would that open up the city to any sort of liability with having people camping? I mean, would?
Short answer is, we, yes. I mean, you know, whether that's legal or political or moral, yes. And what I mean by that is, again, as we dug into these camps that other cities were providing, you have to imagine, again, public health and safety issues. You have to imagine, are there registered sex offenders here? And how do we track it? And are there children nearby? And who's providing security? Who's managing it? So some cities have basically contracted out a third-party management company to do that, nonprofit usually. But you see the contract amounts, and it's very, very expensive.
Thank you.
I'm going to just go back and forth here. Councilman Durio.
Yeah, Mr. Boone, well, so you really don't have a number as far as how much has been spent on cleanup?
I do not.
Also, is enforcement include ticketing or arrests?
It could include ticketing.
Has any ticketing been done?
I don't believe we've actually issued any citations. We have filed on property owners, but I don't believe we've had, we've actually cited individuals. But I can confirm that.
Also, you said y'all were looking at different ways. Have y'all looked into maybe transporting some of these homeless folks to jurisdictions that actually receive state funding for the homeless?
We have not. Obviously, there's a city to our west, which is, has a lot of resources. But I think, and I think they are looking right now at thirty-five million dollars a year to try to address their issues. But I will say...
People bringing theirs here, and a city to our west actually receives money for that from the state. Might be something worth looking into.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Yes, Councilwoman.
You say that you are, have ticketed businesses or property owners? Explain this to me, why are we doing this?
Citing, we've cited property owners who have refused to participate. So in other words, the whole idea is compliance. And so if we go to the individuals and they clean up, great. If they don't, and we go to the property owner and say, look, can y'all help us get this clean? And if they're cooperative and say, yes, you know, we'll put forth an affidavit in no trespassing, you know, we'll allow y'all to clean it up, or we'll clean it up, then that's great. But if they're reluctant to, ultimately, the ordinance allows us to cite those property owners.
Okay, but we're not citing people for not cleaning up a mess that they did not create. You're just saying unless they are non-compliant, not that we want you to clean up this mess at your expense and we're going to give you a ticket.
Right, so like those processes that we spelled out, our, when we ride by, we're not going to run out and cite a property owner if it looks like this. We're going to go through these steps, that's a last resort.
And now, let me ask you this, in an effort of the business owners, are they, do they have support or relief for like a hotline, or like, let's say, for an example, my good friend said her windows are, I mean, is there, I guess, aside from making an insurance claim, if it rises to the level of meeting the deductible, whatever the case may be, is there some type of hotline or inside of this task force a relief for them? That they get some additional support or something?
Short answer is, you know, if something like that, obviously, you need to call the police department. In terms of communication, we do, our task force does have a working internal email group. I know that some of y'all get some from the local businesses and those neighbors, and we usually forward all those to the working group, so everybody's aware of those.
But they don't have like a direct police line or person, or person that's just there to address this, where we know that this is going on constantly, over and over repeatedly? And maybe there, you know, it's costing them money or time or effort or energy where they got to straighten this out because they happen to be located where they're located? Nothing specifically for them to get some relief?
Yeah, we, there's not a, short answer is not a direct hotline to like someone who's dedicated to this issue other than, like I mentioned, the three-one-one would be routed to our working group ordinance. But it's something I can certainly raise.
There's also, real quick, there's also the non-emergency line for PD. So I know sometimes if I have to go by there and there's blockage within the sidewalks and whatnot of personal items or something like that, then we call the non-emergency line for PD.
With the meeting that's going to be scheduled with the Dream Center, or I guess, will we be able to follow up? Or will you make a presentation of whatever the outcome of that meeting is so that we can kind of be updated on what the thoughts are about relocation or possible partnerships? Or maybe getting together with the Salvation Army or some other place, or whatever the organizations are? If they partner together or want to get together, I mean, because those organizations are located where they are, but if in fact there's an opportunity to relocate, if they're interested in doing that, I mean, I'd kind of like to hear what their thoughts are about relocating some of those services into whatever this new location could possibly be, whatever their thoughts may be on that. I'd be interested to hear that.
Yes, ma'am, we can get you a status update.
Councilman Elliard, then I'll get to you, Councilman Crenshaw.
I'm just going to echo, I mean, I'm a hundred percent with Chris. I think that we are feeling the same way. If Houston has the resources, why not send them? And, you know, I think the problem in the gateway to our downtown and a lot of these businesses on Calder is, and I don't mean that they're deer, but if you put a deer feeder out, you get deer. You move a deer feeder, you don't get deer anymore. So what are the chances of moving some other place and these other locations to a more remote facility or more remote place that, till we can come up with a better strategic plan to deal with them? Because I believe if we move the free services, then the people will go with it. So, I mean, is there any way we can put pressure from the city on these places to get them to move, to get out of our Calder area and our downtown area?
Well, so, you know, initially, we want to hopefully be able to bring them a solution. You know, is there a way? I mean, we do provide funding from time to time, C D B G. You know, there are enforcement efforts going on, but our preference is to see if we can work with them to see, okay, is there a better, is there a better alternative? And that's what we're exploring with this meeting.
But it, I mean, we're working with them, but it appears to be getting worse. So, you know, rather than have them in an area that we're trying to rebuild and to grow economically, it doesn't make any sense to have those locations there anymore. And so, you know, we can, we can all come to a different plan, but in the meantime, move the, move the free stuff to somewhere where it's not going to be as intrusive to the businesses and the homes that are around the area.
Yes, sir.
Councilman Crenshaw.
All right, a couple of things. Before I get into discussing what I've already mentioned before at a previous council meeting about relocating the providers, it is going on today that small towns around Beaumont drop their homeless off in Beaumont. And if we don't think that that's not occurring, let me give you a very specific example where I won't mention the city, to protect my friend that's the police chief over there, but a local city that neighbors Beaumont had a police officer pick up a homeless person, bring them to Parkdale Mall. When the homeless person slipped out of the back of the vehicle, they took the police officer's police jacket with them, and the police officer did not notice that. And that homeless person was then walking around Parkdale Mall with a police jacket on, which got a call to the Beaumont Police Department, which showed up and then figured out where this out-of-town police department jacket came from. So where I'm going with all that is, it's generally just not a good idea. And I'm not saying, Councilman Durio, that you're advocating for us just to go drop them off in another town. You specifically said if Houston has the resources from the state, maybe they're more equipped to handle the homeless. I'm just saying, as a general rule, it's just, it's not a good idea for us or a city to take a position that we're going to just send our homeless to another city because other cities are already doing that to us, and it's not working. We have got to come up with something more immediate to help these businesses on Calder. We can't just keep talking about it. We have got to relocate the providers to a industrial area of town that is not surrounded by residences and small businesses. These businesses on Calder are dying. Downtown Beaumont is overrun with homeless, and we keep talking about downtown revitalization. It's never going to happen until we fix this homeless issue. And I don't have all the solutions, and I don't know the long-term plan. I think that probably a long-term solution is going to be something that's going to take us years. But I think that we need to use our existing laws and statutes to focus on these providers. These providers over off of Calder, they have a great mission. I really appreciate what they're doing. Their unintended consequences, when they all strategically located right next to each other, they probably did not realize what they were about to do to that neighborhood, and they have destroyed it. And we need to take immediate action to help these people. You had Mr. Tyler Wharton earlier say that he would be happy to buy a piece of property to help with this situation. Maybe we start with the Salvation Army in some other place, and they start providing their services at a location away from where they are now. And that then brings me to demand community development. Are any of the current service providers off of Calder, do any of them have specific use permits that would allow us as a city to step in and say, look, your original mission was good, but you have now created a nuisance for all residences and small businesses in the area around you. And because of this nuisance that you've created, we are now, you're now at risk of having your specific use permit revoked. And I hate to get to that point, but again, that's the type of conversation I think that we need to start having with the Salvation Army in some other place, and I forget the other organizations. But we've got to start being more aggressive, because while they have done some things to try to help, it is not enough. And these businesses and these people are suffering. Year after year, this has been going on, and it only seems to be getting worse. I mean, I'm shocked that our numbers have gone from two thirty-five to four hundred plus to one thirty-seven. I can't imagine that's accurate. That sounds like some of the jobs data that we get sometimes from the government, you know? I'm just, I'm not sure I can trust those numbers. And I've, I mean, Calder is my drive to my office and to City Hall every morning. And you can see the homeless up and down Calder, that entire drive. And if we see them out in the open, you can only imagine what's going on at night. I've done four ride-alongs with the Beaumont Police Department since I've been sworn in on this council. I specifically pick the graveyard shift to do the ride-along with, and it's like something out of a movie, you know, like something out of L.A. or, you know, some horrible situation, you know, just people strung out on drugs or drunk or whatever it is, all over the street, all over those areas, over there off of Calder. The funeral home over there, the Brucearts, you know, they, it's hard for them to provide services for people grieving and visiting loved ones in the funeral home because they're harassed by people when they come out to their cars at night. Poor Ms. Barbara Wilson, I mean, we get emails from her weekly about what these people are going through. And so far, this is no negativity on city staff. We've got to come up with a more immediate, better plan to help these businesses because these businesses are eventually going to pack up and move away. because these businesses are eventually gonna pack up and move away a lot quicker uh, than us coming up with some grand plan that no other cities thought about. This is an issue that every city has and I just feel like we've got to do more. Demi, what do you, do we know anything about specific use permits over there?
There's no specific use permit on that property. Um, some of those services predate uh, or they're grandfathered at this point. Um, so there's, there's no specific use permit out there um, for those uh, properties. Um, we could look at their COs, but I'd have to look over the um, ordinances that are in place, uh, the adopted codes as well to see if anything, uh, if there's any code violation on that. Um, the only thing that, you know, if we were to um, encourage relocation, um, and you know, they're willing to also relocate as well, um, to move shelters into an industrial area would probably uh, take a uh, ordinance amendment um, to our permitted use table. So that's something that would have to go to planning commission and council for approval and review.
And, and let me ask you uh, to build upon that, do you know of what other cities have done to alleviate uh, homeless issues in residential and uh, let's just say, general commercial areas? Do you know what other cities have done so far as ordinances to try to move the service providers to maybe industrialized zoned areas?
That's mainly controlled by zoning code. Um, so with that uh, amendment to move shelters to um, uh, possible industrial areas, you know, you could um, possibly uh, lessen the zoning districts that are near residential um, uh, near residential zoning districts. Um, typically your industrials are separated from your residential, so um, but i- having, having known that, if you make that amendment, whatever is in place now will be considered grandfathered. Um, so it's not that you can force anyone to move, they would have to be willing to move.
Well, we could force them to move if, if, if we had a, a viable case for that these current uh, nonprofits or organizations are nuisances, correct?
It, it's tough to say, I think that's really case by case. Um, you know, if it's a specific use permit, then they have certain conditions by ordinance that they have to meet. Um, and if they violate any of those conditions, um, then they can be brought back before plan, planning commission and council. Um, but it, it's really tough to say because a lot of that is case by case.
Okay, have you seen other cities that have allowed primitive camping in industrial areas?
Not in Texas. I've seen it workshop, but I've not seen it done yet.
And I would like to lean in here because uh, I certainly appreciate all our business owners and it's huge challenge. You know, when we look at Salvation Army, they're there because the city of Beaumont, and there was nobody on this council, but gave them money to rehab those properties. And uh, because they thought it was a good idea, because Henry's Place, which is a part of that, has their post office. And certainly uh, things are being, people are being fed there. And I, I think we need to continue to have those conversations. But one thing about it is we're gonna have to put our money where our mouth is as a council. Cause we're talking about a lot of things, but we don't have anything budgeted for this. The city of Houston has uh, budgeted this year thirty-one million dollars, but John Whitmire's plan is a seventy million dollars. So it's, it, it's underfunded by thirty-nine million dollars at this point for the city of Houston. Austin is spending a hundred and one million dollars. So I just want to bring up that this is a tremendous amount of money. And if you've been to Houston or you've been to Austin, their problems are much larger than ours. So uh, you know, I think coming up with a solution and working with some other place and the Salvation Army is a good start. But I, it is gonna be something we work with. I mean, they're, they're funded by local churches and individuals and they provide a number of services beyond the homeless services and uh, that are very important. And you know, in terms of feeding people too. So we can't, you know, in terms of whether we're able to remove them, we can't guarantee that they'd be going anywhere. And uh, so I, I think in terms of being confrontational about this, we really need to be able to work with them because th- they do, they provide an incredible service. I mean, uh, some other place and Salvation Army, some other place will put cots up when it freezes or they'll bring people in, in the summer when it's really hot. And you know, people want that to happen. They want to be able to provide these, you know, and if we were opening up Civic Center or anything else, that would involve separate budgeting. So I, I think one of the first things we can do is, is look at uh, budgets, but we are gonna be having a conversation and maybe include them and see where they are in this. But uh, I, I'm sure they're gonna, you know, that would be expensive. I mean, I don't know of any facility that's currently built that would accommodate what they have. And uh, so I'm sure they would need uh, funds for that. And being a part of a council that discussed primitive camping, uh, all you gotta do is mention a location. I guarantee you, everybody's phone in here is gonna go off. So I'm not saying we shouldn't move it, but it is not gonna be an easy solution. And uh, and it is gonna require some money. So uh, we, we need to be mindful of it as a council. If we're talking about solving this problem, we need to designate some funds, which can be interesting. Councilman Turner?
So, Assistant City Manager Boom, do you have clear direction as a council? Uh, where we're trying to go or idea? And if you do, can you kind of let us know what you feel was the direction from listening to us?
Yes, sir. So I'll just kind of touch on highlights on my, gonna get a cost analysis of kind of what we're spending. Um, not just hard costs to clean up, but also personnel costs. I'm gonna look and see if we've actually cited any individuals for violations of the ordinance. Um, I'm gonna look and see if we could, whether or not it makes sense to have a direct uh, kind of a hotline. We're gonna follow up on this meeting that we're trying to set up in the next few weeks uh, to look at different options with some of our, our local government partners. Um, and then also, I think we heard loud and clear that there's some urgency to try to do something, but knowing that there's a, probably a financial uh, component to it. And then uh, last but not least, we're gonna do some research to see if uh, any cities in, especially in Texas, but any cities nationwide maybe have had success and um, you know, pursuing closure if it got too bad and, and um, you know, are there, are there options for pursuing nuisance or something like that?
Yes, and particularly relocating the current providers to an industrial area.
Mm-hmm, yes.
And, and last thing is exploring the options of it being a public nuisance. I think, you know, that's something people have said consistently up here. Uh, I've seen instances where it could be as simple as a, a bar in the middle of a neighborhood where they lost their permit because it was a public nuisance to the neighbors and it was disturbing. So if it could happen in this instance, I'm, I'm struggling to understand why we can't look at, if we can't work together exploring that option. Because again, I'm in those same email threads and whether I be at a community event or whether I be anywhere, I have people like Ms. Barbara that approach me and, you know, we've been talking, but they're looking for some action. So, you know, I just wanted to make sure it was clear understanding on what we all discussed up here today on direction because I think it's pretty evident that the, the taste for this has changed. Because on the last council, similar what Mayor said, it wasn't a taste to be this aggressive, but clearly it's one on this council.
Yes, sir.
And as a reminder, uh, the Dream Center is not in the city of Beaumont and it is county owned facility. So, and hopefully maybe they, that will be something they would consider. But I know they are putting, uh, they're adding two diversion centers out there right now to utilize that. So for, to be able to divert people that are going to jail for drug and alcohol and uh, um, and mental health issues. So, but I s- I, but I, I also think in that is uh, we, you know, we need to get some realistic uh, attempts at dollar amounts and of what we might need to do as a council to approve, to be able to execute anything. Because as the city uh, police, public health, code enforcement, you know, i- it certainly takes a lot of their time and resources, which we're not, we didn't add people when we added these uh, these new jobs, including the downtown code enforcement, you know, enhanced as, as well as the camping ordinance. And uh, you know, but I, I realize that it certainly continues to be a challenge, but we're gonna ha- we're gonna have to look at it in terms of addressing it as a cost and that's not, so.
Councilman Durio, then we'll go to city manager.
I know Chris or, or Demi can answer this. What areas of Beaumont do you consider to be industrial areas?
So they're typically, they're typically spread out, but if you think about, there are portions, and help me out here, Demi, certainly portions along Fourth Street um, to the southeast of Old Town. There are certainly industrial areas along Seventh Street near Knife River and all that. There's certainly areas out Washington Avenue, uh, Boulevard. Um, they're kind of scattered all, all, you know, in different locations along Cardinal and certain parts of Fennett.
And a lot towards uh, city limit lines.
A lot in your ward, Mr. Counsel.
It, it, I know, all of them looks like. Uh, just clarification from Councilmember, uh, Councilmember Turner says it was a clear. I'm not so sure the direction is clear. So I wanna try to help clarify it, yeah. Yeah, what do you want, what's the philosophy of this council in dealing with homelessness? That's what we need identified, that to, to, to move the resources, that's the number one goal? W- we need to know what your philosophy, what you want done so we can do it. Cause otherwise staff's gonna get blamed for it. They're not doing anything. Once we know what you want, we can concentrate on. I think Councilmember Crenshaw was pretty clear on some of his comments.
Yeah, I think we, I, I, our immediate goal is to bring relief to these businesses on Calder. I, I, I think that that should be our immediate goal. Uh, and we should have different long term goals that might include the primitive, primitive camp and all of that. But we have got to take some immediate action to help these people on Calder because it has been going on for too long and these businesses are, businesses are being destroyed and they're eventually gonna leave.
Immediate action is meeting, getting people, arresting people, et cetera. And we've been roundabout way told that the jails not gonna take them. You know, we've been, been informed of that.
Well, I bet they took the guy that did the stabbing a couple of weeks ago.
Maybe, yeah, but, but, but they're just saying homeless, w- w- we've gotta make other, that's why we wanna invite them to the table. I mean, y'all need to be part, they need to be part of this solution too. So it's, that's no good for our department to arrest people and can't take them anywhere.
Yeah, similar to what you were saying, Councilman Crenshaw, if the county is not willing to accept them, now we need to have a tough, real conversation because now it's putting us in a tight spot if they quit taking Class Cs or whatever could be proposed.
We'll need to include Sheriff Stevens.
You can't arrest someone for being homeless. You can arrest, you can arrest someone for trespassing, you can tr- arrest someone for committing a crime. And so when you have a non compliant property owner or a property owner who says, I don't wanna issue a trespass warning or I don't wanna, you know, go through the steps, it limits the ability for police officers to make those viable arrests.
I, I can.
And so you can make an arrest for, obviously for public intoxication and some of, some other charges. But Councilman Crenshaw, you're aware, they turn around and get out the next morning after, after an arraignment. So it's not, it's not the solution um, that, that would give the most and the maximum uh, benefit to the property owner. So arresting individuals um, for classy misdemeanors doesn't work.
I, I, I.
It's a, it's a short term solution. So to, to the individuals who are having to deal with other things as a relation to um, you know, public masturbation and assaults and, and higher criminal charges, obviously those, those individuals are arrested and the, the charges have to be filed, the witnesses have to come through and do their part. PD does their part. Um, it's incumbent, once they do their part, for the other agencies to do their part, for the witnesses involved to do their part. Um, that's not always the case. Um, and so to, to, to say that we want to just arrest them and do those things, that, it's not that that's not happening. It's, that's not always a viable option.
I, I do believe there are instances where the jail is turning uh, people around for things like littering and things like that, you know? And so uh, uh, under no circumstances is anyone on this council, I think, advocating arresting people for being homeless just for being homeless. But if they are panhandling uh, at College Street and uh, throwing their trash all over and making uh, the underpass at College Street in I-ten uh, look like a, a third world country, uh, then I do believe that our officers should be empowered to arrest people that they observe committing crimes and violations of the law and they should be taken to the jail. And that is a deterrent overall. There are a lot of homeless people uh, uh, that do not like being arrested. Some people think, well, you know, they get a place to stay and it's air conditioned and they get a meal. They don't always like that because sometimes they get out of jail, whether it be the next day or in a couple of days and whatever belongings they did have are now gone. Uh, and so it is a deterrent for them. And I guarantee you, when they're getting arrested, they're not happy about it. And they're not saying, please take me to jail. So uh, I do believe that we should enforce that stuff and uh, especially on littering. Um, uh, if that is a crime that anyone can be arrested for, the only two crimes in Texas that I'm aware of that you can't be arrested for are speeding an open container. Uh, and I always say that the legislature made it that way because that's probably two things that they did uh, fairly often themselves. Uh, but those are the only two crimes in Texas that you cannot arrest someone for, speeding an open container in a vehicle. And uh, you know, I, I do believe our police should be empowered to make those arrests uh, when they believe that they have the evidence to do that and that that is a deterrent for uh, homeless people in this community uh, making the, the trash. Uh, and the situation overall Calder Street and in our neighborhoods is worse than it already is.
Okay, Councilman, thank you.
Can, can I, can we, these property owners that are allowing it, can we, can we impose some kind of financial penalties on them?
Yes.
So, I mean, if, if, instead of dragging them to the courts, if we pass something and we start hitting them in the pocketbook, wouldn't that deter the uh, their, them hosting these, these camps?
Well, the remedy would be to fine them for violation of the camping ordinance.
Okay.
And so that, and again, that could be filed again and again and again repeatedly. We could collect fines to the extent the court, you know.
Are we doing that now?
We are, we do have uh, cases, yes.
Okay.
But that, just to be clear, that has to go through due process. Anything that's on private property is due process. So it has to go to the judge and judge um, you know, assesses the fine.
Councilman Durio?
We were talking earlier about if anything we passed, uh, they would be grandfathered. But if we pass an ordinance, don't we have the option not to grandfather folks?
I do not recommend that. Um, not with the zoning code, no.
Yeah, with the, so there's, there's the zoning, which when we talk about zoning, that's a grand, you, you grandfather, it's basically built in. If you have a freestanding ordinance, that's a little different. Um, and then there's a question of nuisance. But as mentioned, we're, we're gonna do some research to see what other cities may have done.
And also, um, not, not saying we're gonna arrest people for being homeless, but that can, can they be arrested for breaking our camping ordinance?
No, we can fine them. They, I don't believe so.
Again, that would be punishing them for being homeless.
Yeah, I think, yeah. Uh, and I, so maybe to draw a conclusion here, I know I, I will uh, be a part of the meeting with some other place and Salvation Army, include the city manager and about uh, possibilities for them, if any. And you know, what action we want to take as a council. Because I, I, I hear what we're saying to you and uh, I know that as council, we're gonna have to do something because our, I, this, this continues to be a big problem and we might have to spend some money on it. So uh, to be able to get a conclusion, but we also need to get buy-in from some people. And I know we're working on that other meeting too, that could be the Dream Center.
Okay, all right, mate. So one's actively enforced right now, short term, actively enforced. Work on solutions with the providers, resource providers. Okay. And doing, partner with the other partners, county people, whatever, on some, some assistance solutions, et cetera.
Yes, sir.
Taking them to Houston's out, I'll take it. Is it?
And I think people need to remember on that is, people are being asked if they wanna go. I mean, we're not kidnapped, you wouldn't, just like neither uh, surrounding cities aren't kidnapping people. They say, hey, Beaumont has services, would you like a ride over there? And uh, certainly that happens uh, and you know, and then they find their people. And certainly that happens and, you know, and then they find their people because there's communities and for those that want it, but I'm sure they can still migrate back. But I mean, we, that would always be an option. It's just whether or not we would want to fund something like that because that is a question that can be asked and we can find out if there's, you know, agencies that would that would, you know, take care of that for us. Yes, Councilman Turner.
Mr. Manager, currently the county, the prisons, don't each surrounding city contributes to their prisoners at the county level?
Yeah, typically cities don't have jails anymore and the and the sheriff and the counties, they're they're in charge to with being a jail, been holding prisoners now.
So we have a jail contract and we pay for our, anyone who's arrested on a Class C, anyone who's arrested under a warrant after they've been committed comes a responsibility of the sheriff per the contract.
Yeah, I love the fact that we have a contract because I would support the same county contract with the situation that we're discussing right now. We're going to allocate a certain amount of funding to go towards, you know, facilities like that dreams. And I know we're talking around it, but I already know what's going to happen. Like Mayor said, when we start speaking about location, I know how that's going to work and that's kind of out there. And I just want to kind of home in on that, that me as a council member, I would be supportive to some type of arrangement similar to what we have with our prisoners.
With the prison, I mean, with the Dream Center or with the county?
With the Dream Center, if we get to that point, I would, as an individual council member, and be supportive of putting funding, allocating funding towards that similar to us paying for our Beaumont prisoners to the county.
Okay. Please don't speak up. Mark? This is a council work session. There was a chance to talk at. For the public hearings. All right, anything else from council? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Assistant City Manager Boone. All right, with that, we're going to have council member comments and then we will recess to executive session. The Councilman Crenshaw?
Well, I have quite a bit to say, but I know it's been a long day and it's still not over for us because we have executive session. Let me just say that kudos to the city manager for the improvements on the projected budget for 2026. In addition to the improvements that have already been made, I think that I would ask that we look at other ways to cut from the city budget, whether it be consolidation of departments, whether it be looking at certain department heads and lack of performance that's happened. I believe that the city budget needs to be more focused on rewarding good behavior for department heads that are doing well and in rewarding their performance. And I think that there should be more consequences for department heads that are not performing in accordance with what they're supposed to be doing and their department's budgets and things like that. So I think what I'm basically trying to say is I would ask that we focus in the 2026 budget on better accountability from our city department heads. And I think that from what I've experienced and feedback from taxpayers and citizens is that there's a perception that there's a lack of accountability with government in general and then particularly with this city. That said, I do try to point out great examples within our city staff of departments that are going above and beyond and department heads that are going above and beyond. In particular, Molly Villarreal, she does a phenomenal job. Public Works does a phenomenal job. Demi Ingman does a great job at community development. We have certain department heads that I think are doing great and we've increased their workload, I know, since I've been on council, especially for Molly and her team over at Public Works. And and so I do want to see a city reward department heads that are performing above and beyond what we asked them to do. But I'm, the public tells me that they believe that there are other departments that are not, and I'd ask that we be more cognizant of that. Finally, the last remarks I want to make on, I know, I guess using the word deficit is discouraged, but on going over our projected reoccurring expenses. I believe, and I would hope that there's a majority of this council believes, that it's not that we're trying to grow the reserve account. It's that there is a fear among citizens and taxpayers that if we spend out of that and we get down to that 20% requirement, that there won't be any way in the future for emergencies and unexpected expenses to fund things. Don't keep going. I guess that's their way of telling me to be quiet, that there's no way to fund those things without raising taxes. And and that's the fear. And so people don't want to see a budget that projects us coming out of our reserve 7.6 million and getting the reserve balance down to 38 million when it's required that we have 34 million. If that only leaves us $4 million moving into 2026, that if an emergency or something unexpected comes up, that there's not going to be anything that we can do other than the council making the decision to raise taxes. And so that's the fear and that's why I think that it's a good idea that we stay well above that and that we only spend out of the reserve fund or the rainy day fund or our savings account for unexpected emergency items. And so when we make a budget moving forward, it's a bad idea to count spending out of that for your projected budget. I get why it met the definition that the council previously adopted of a balanced budget. I get that and I do appreciate the additional explanation that you gave us and the and the reduction in that projection of the 3.1 million. But at the end of the day, taxpayers, that's what they tell me. They say, we don't want to spend out of that account and we don't want to see you making the budget happen using those reserve funds. So with that said, it's a long meeting today. Thanks so much for, to my fellow council members, thanks so much for staff and for the citizens that have been here today. I hope you do understand that your council and city staff are 100% listening to what you're saying and we're trying to bring about positive change that everyone can be happy with.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilwoman?
Thank you, Mayor, for conducting a good meeting today. I'm pleased with the outcome. I want to say thank you to the Gift of Life for all the work that they do. Cancer is a nasty, terrible, horrible disease. Thank you to Junior League of Beaumont for all the work that you do inside the community helping out. I'd like to encourage participation for the ladies' symposium that will be happening on Saturday, September 20th at 8:00 a.m. at our Sterling Pruitt Center. Some of Beaumont's finest will be speakers and keynote speakers. My girl over there is a keynote. I'm excited about that. So I want to encourage you, that's for all the ladies in the city of Beaumont, sixth grade and up, not just young girls, but moms as well. Do bring your daughters out. It's going to be imperative, important and encouraging for our young ladies in the future. Congratulations to city manager on another good budget. I appreciate you. I am happy and pleased to say that we did not raise property tax rates and water rates are going to remain the same. I appreciate you for that. We are listening, we do hear you, to our constituents. I'd also like to say, congratulations Beaumont on being in good financial standing. That matters and I'd like us to keep that up. And I'd like to say thank you again, Mayor, for, you know, setting the record straight today. I appreciate you. Good meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman?
I just want to thank Mr. City Manager for for listening to our concerns and acting accordingly. From from day one, you said to give you direction and then you would would act and you've held up that that end of the bargain, so thank you for that. And Councilman Turner, I know earlier you mentioned about seeing more participation from first responders within the community. And so I just wanted to shine light on the firefighters have an upcoming event called Project Fire Buddies that they just put in place and and our local firefighters will engage and build relationships with terminally ill children and just kind of bring some positivity into their life. And and I know that they have an event coming up for that and so it'd be worth looking into for all of us. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Turner?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I appreciate you, Councilman Williams, even enlightening, educating the community on what's coming. I think it's important we have that open dialogue and get a clear understanding. But another announcement is the Boys and Girls, the Boys and Girls Club of America reached out to me recently and they're looking to have a meeting, you know, on September 22nd or September 23rd at noon. And me personally, I would like to open it up to all council members and maybe get with Catherine and see, once we firm it up a date, maybe we can make it a posted item so we actually all can show up. I think that's something that's been missing in our community for quite some time, whether it be, you know, the YMCA's and these different initiatives, we just don't have it no more. They're interested in coming back to the community of Beaumont. That's something I've been working on. I want to invite everybody to it. The next thing is, you know, I've been getting this consistently brought to me from people throughout the community is maybe some form of an industrial agreement committee. What's happening is we use this term of local, but we're not actually auditing or we can't speak to the auditing of if they're kind of in compliance of these local jobs they speak of. We have people that are retired from some of these industrial places and some people in finance and that I think would be good to utilize to audit these things because if the city's giving abatements and we aren't holding them accountable, we're losing out on revenue in the long run. My next thing is the employee evaluations to our city manager. I appreciate it. You've been working on this quite some time and I know it's a lot of things that go into it. And one thing I do support, similar to what Councilman Crenshaw said earlier, I do support accountability for people in higher roles that are making that form of a salary that are not performing at the level that we feel is necessary. I think it's very, it's very important that we kind of have these standards and goals and maybe at a later meeting, we can kind of let you know what direction we want to go in. But as of right now, I kind of want to key in on these higher paid positions that we can't control. I know we control four employees, the city manager, city attorney, city magistrate and the county, the city clerk, but if other employees we have no control over and we need to kind of set a boring standard of expectation in where we want to go because we got to move in a certain direction of the city and I'm ready to make some of those hard, tough decisions. If we're not going to get on board, I support, if people don't want to do that, maybe they don't need to work at the city of Beaumont. So that's why I'm at with it. And my last thing is, can we reach out to the school district and maybe see if they can do a robo call on Friday to talk about the symposium for the young ladies that's coming up on Saturday? We were very successful when we did the symposium for the young men. We had hundreds of kids come out and attend. I just want to make sure we had that same attendance with the younger ladies.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Hilliard?
Well, I'll be short. I I want to thank the city manager and mayor for a great meeting and what you did to listen to us and and reduce the the fluid budget that we are looking at and city staff. Other than that, I really don't have anything else. I just, I think everybody's doing a fantastic job and thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Durio?
Yeah, I as well would like to thank the staff and the and the city manager and and I really appreciate this this council. We were able to express our concerns and and come together. Everybody, you know, spoke their mind, spoke what was concerning them and at the end of the day, though, was ready to vote this budget in. So that's, that's what we're supposed to be able to do. We're grownups, we can disagree, but we got it done. Also, Blessed Sacrament Schools having their mass reunion this coming weekend. Both my parents attended that school and I just want to tell them to have a great reunion. And also, my my sister-in-law, Yola Ann Barnes, she's a retiree of the city of Beaumont and she passed last week. She worked here for over 20 years and she went through a five-year-long battle with with cancer and she fought, but she passed last week. So if you could keep my family and my wife's family in our prayers, we would surely appreciate it because she was the, she was the oldest of six sisters and she was, she was their leader and she she looked out for everybody, even me, her brother-in-law, all our grandkids. She was, she was the one that we really going to miss her. I think that's it, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Durio. Madam, City Attorney?
Real brief, Mayor, just want to take a moment to congratulate my daughter who is excelling in her career at the Army. She was recently promoted to specialist and she's now a platoon sergeant, so she has a couple of soldiers under her. Just, these are very weird times, so if you have some spare prayers, if you can send them to the military and all the military moms, it'd be great, we appreciate it.
Yes, ma'am.
First, I want to thank everyone who attended Viva Fest this weekend. Thought it was a great event and it was very well attended. Did have a couple of updates. Tech Stop announced today, starting Monday, September 22nd, through the fall of 2027, they will be closing the I-10 westbound Frontage Road to One Lane. So let the fun begin. And so that's about to kick off. Before that kicks off, they will be closing Harrison Street at the I-10 eastbound Frontage Road, starting at 9:00 a.m. Thursday, this Thursday, till Sunday morning. So traffic, pack your patience, ask Google Maps to get you around there. But those are two Tech Stop announcements that came out today. The second one actually came out during our meeting. Also wanted to follow back up with Councilman Durio. You mentioned 12th Street at Washington, that when you're making that left turn, that side obstruction with the vegetation and the for sale sign. We received word back from the property owner that should get cleared up by the end of the month. You're welcome.
Mr. Mayor, can I add just one quick thing to what Molly just said? After they announced that they're going to close the westbound lanes, I did reach out to Tech Stop and they are going to restaff that and see if they cannot possibly just do half of what they're talking about and leaving maybe Calder down to Laurel okay for now. Really, I'm trying to protect Calder, knowing how much of an artery that is with the Maury Myers Bridge being closed down. So anyway, I did reach out to them. It was a good conversation and they are going to revisit that issue, knowing that it's a very unpopular decision. And anyway, I just wanted to add that.
Thank you, Councilman. City Manager Boone?
Real quickly, just wanted to congratulate Emily Wheeler and her staff and all the other city departments who are involved in Viva Fest. It was a great event Sunday, so just want to share that. That's all.
Thank you. All right.
Mayor, just really quick, I wanted to thank everyone for their thoughts, prayers, phone calls, text messages on the passing of my brother, younger brother. His funeral was on Saturday and I just want to thank the city manager and the executive staff for the beautiful, huge plant that we received. So I just want everybody to know that I appreciate the thoughts and prayers from me and my family. Thank you so much.
I'd just like to thank Finance for the work they did on the budget. I'd like to thank Duncan and Amy and June for the work that they did and all the directors. You know, it looked like an easy product, but it takes a lot of documents to put all that stuff together and sort through it to get into a comprehensive document. I'd like to thank all of them for their work. I'd like to thank you as a city council for your work on the budget.
I'd like to thank you as a city council for your work on the budget, taking time and patience to sit through meetings and hear sometimes not the most exciting information to tick, tickle a capital project sometimes, so thank you for your participation. I just, just encourage you to give input upfront, it makes it so much easier, quality control is, is much better when we ask for it, give us some feedback and then we can build it around that feedback. If you don't know, you know, we're building a budget based upon what's been done in the past or whatever, and if your priorities are different, we just need to know what those priorities are and what you want to see in that, so I encourage you to provide feedback. Police contract negotiations have started, we are, we met with them last week, we'll be meeting with them again in a couple of weeks, their contract is not up until next end of September, but we're all being proactive and sitting down and having a good discussion with the, the police department, we appreciate them for, for that movement, they, they solved that out and it's working, we appreciate that. As far as high-paid positions, you know, city Beaumont has 538 employees that make over $75,000 and 445 of them work in police and fire. So you're not talking about a lot of people in high-paid and you can't fire police and fire down the contract. So you're talking about almost 90 people otherwise that would be impacted and we're talking about people that are engineers, contractors, CPA accountants, all type, it's not just directors, when we talk about that, you know, we want to hold them accountable, but that number is not as large as you think. The people that are paid in police and fire, 445 out of 538 make the mo, make the money. So when we talk about doing that, talk about, think about what you're doing and the impact of what you're going to be doing, because you can't touch them, you can't touch their salaries. So you're picking on people who sacrificed, went to college, got certifications and you want to impact their lives, when they did what they had to do when they're not the majority of the people. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager, and certainly, I think this council, I think it was, had lots of good discussions today and appreciate all the presentations and appreciate the city manager and the administration and we, we can, you know, we've got, we do have to be careful with what we say because these, we've had city employees be here a long time and, you know, we, I, I know from my standpoint, since we're city manager, former government, I look at how the departments run and, and I've found Mr. Williams very responsive when there's any challenges. And oftentimes, we're not going to know all the behind the scenes because that's not what we need to know, we just, we get to hold Mr. Williams accountable for it and I've, so I know we can continue to improve. I know I've had several, the last two days and before that, I've had meetings where groups have asked me to, to bring information about the bond education. So know that all the neighborhood association meetings, information's being presented, whenever we host an event, as we did this weekend, there's staff there that is handing out events and then obviously we're having the upcoming different wards, starting Monday through Thursday and then again October 16th. But if you're a part of an organization or, and would like to have somebody come speak to you, feel free to reach out to me or any of your other council people as well as city staff and we will, we will come because we want everybody to be aware of everything that they're voting on. And, and I'm, I'm excited to feel the energy from this council regarding the homelessness issue and I think that we can make some steps forward in the, and I know in the past we've, you know, it's a difficult issue to navigate, but we can continue to try. And with that, the meeting is recessed into executive session. Thank you all. And thank you for being.